You're prepared to start?
We're ready to go.
Okay, great. So we'll go on the record. This is the time and place for the hearing, the seventh public hearing on the conditional use application filed by Olympus Energy for the Dionysus well pad. When we last left off, the Crowd group, as represented by Mr. Tim Reszenetti, were presenting their case in chief. I believe Mr. Reszenetti has finished calling his last witness and is going to be presenting testimony on behalf of Crowd himself this evening as far as for our next step in the process. So I would ask a court reporter, as we do each and every hearing, to go ahead and swear everyone in who may be providing testimony tonight.
If you may just write in, please, if you're going to give testimony, do you solemnly swear by Almighty God that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or do you affirm? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. With that said, Mr. Reszenetti, if you're ready to go, we'll turn it over to you. Just a reminder for everyone, as we always do, we do have a court reporter taking down all the testimonies, so please speak slowly and clearly. Identify yourself and spell your last name before you begin your testimony, and we'll take you away, Mr. Reszenetti.
Also, going to introduce two new exhibits into evidence. The first, we're passing out to you, Mr. Lucas. This is Crowd Exhibit 32. This is a printout of the presentation that I'm going to be giving, and I'll be sending the digital copies to the township as well. The second one, calling it a compliance matrix, that's Crowd Exhibit 33. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Tim Reszenetti, speaking on behalf of concerned residents of West Deer. I'm going to be as brief and as focused as possible while highlighting some deficiencies of the application that's before us. It's my position, Crowd's position, that the applicant simply has not met their burden of demonstrating compliance with the applicable portions of the West Deer zoning ordinance. This compliance matrix highlights six specific areas of concern. I'm going to demonstrate to you how the applicant has actually demonstrated through their own exhibits and testimony that they do not comply with the ordinance. I'm not going to dwell on this for long, but a quick refresher on the plain language of the ordinance will help give us some perspective on what I'm about to present. In summary, the ordinance tells us a deep well site, which is what the Dionysus site would be classified as, is everything, soup to nuts, temporary or permanent, that's necessary for or incidental to the existence of a deep well. Further, if more than one area is used, the whole thing is considered the deep well site. Also relevant is how this term is used in the ordinance. In summary, a deep well site is only allowed in certain zoning districts, R2 is allowed, if it would be more than 650 feet from any pre-existing building off the property; otherwise, it shall be prohibited. We know from the applicant's own witnesses and exhibits that the well pad, valve site, stockpiles, erosion and sedimentation controls, all along the LOD, and post-construction stormwater management facilities are what the applicant has referred to as facilities, and this site couldn't be built or operated without them. What's shown on the screen is Olympus's Exhibit A. This is the excerpt that Mr. Blickenderfer read into the record on the first night of the hearing. We also heard from Mr. Blickenderfer that equipment would either be temporarily or permanently on every square inch within the limit of disturbance of the proposed Dionysus site.
This is basically the legal argument, and I'm not going to object to Mr. Reszenetti walking through these items. I would note, however, the record speaks for itself in terms of what Mr. Blickenderfer's testimony was.
Thanks, Mr. Lucas.
Additionally, the SC GP3 permit and Mr. Blickenderfer's testimony confirm that even the DEP considers the Dionysus site to be everything out to the limit of disturbance for their own permitting and regulatory purposes. Mr. Lucas has said, and Mr. Blickenderfer testified, that Dionysus would just be another construction project, no different than, say, Dollar General or Oakwood Heights. However, my research with the Allagana County Conservation District has revealed that typical ENS plants like a Dollar General or Oakwood Heights are approved by the Conservation District. Unconventional oil and gas, erosion and sedimentation plans aren't handled that way. They are recognized as different because there are special risks associated with them. The DEP has a special group within it, and only they can review and approve those ENS plants. It's an entirely different process handled by different groups, not at all the same. The applicant is asking West Deer Township to measure 650 feet from certain equipment that will be placed on the pad, but Mr. Johnson testified during the last session that the equipment locations on these drawings are only approximations. It may not represent the actual location where equipment is placed. How can we determine if this site complies when these drawings only provide approximate This is from Olympus's Exhibit A, Tap 4. This is their setback exhibit. So Olympus's own setback exhibit shows that the Dionysus deep well site will be placed less than 650 feet from 10 pre-existing buildings located off the property. I've numbered them on this slide, 1, 2, 3, 4, all the way up through 10. Those are my numbers. Those weren't included on the original Olympus exhibit, just to be clear. The way I know they're less than 650 feet is these arcs right here are 650 feet. They nearly encircle the site on all sides. Building number 8 to the southeast of the well pad is the one Mrs. Shuey testified about, the Consolidated Communications Building on Oak Road. Of those 10 buildings, 3 would be even closer, at less than 650 feet from what the West Deer zoning ordinance refers to as the drilling pad. Building number 1 on this one is the one Mrs. Shuey testified about. It appears to be less than 650 feet from approximately the center of their well pad. What's shown on the board or on the screen is an excerpt from the West Deer zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance defines what the drilling pad is, which is helpful. It's important to note that the drilling pad is defined separately and differently from the deep well site. Any confusion between the deep well site and the drilling pad can easily be resolved by reading the plain language of the ordinance. The 650 feet minimum relates to the deep well site. The drilling pad has its own requirements, which are not an issue here. Back to Olympus's setback exhibit with the buildings numbered 1 through 10. The minimum distances must be met from pre-existing buildings. The plain language is clear, 650 feet from pre-existing buildings. So why is 650 feet important? It could be because of slips that extend beyond the limit of disturbance that Olympus has experienced, and I talked about with Mr. Blickenderfer. It could be to minimize the impact of noise, or light, or the emissions that not a single one of Olympus's witnesses were willing to answer questions about. It could be to provide a buffer from the operations to avoid the many complaints we heard about in Penn Township and Elizabeth Township. You can review those complaints in Crowd Exhibits 26 and 27. Or it could be for any of the many valid concerns you will hear brought up by your neighbors during this meeting. Here's what I think the important part is for you, the people who we elected to make this decision. Regardless of the specific reasons that all seven supervisors at the time unanimously voted to enact our zoning ordinance, the 650 feet minimum is what they decided was needed to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of our community. I refer to you, Crowd Exhibit 10, to the specific legal arguments supporting this statement. Next up on the compliance matrix is a reference to the flow of traffic. The ordinance states that such locations shall be configured to allow the normal flow of traffic on public streets shall be undisturbed. The situation we have here is that Middle Road Extension cannot accommodate the trucks required to construct this site, let alone the specialized trucks required to drill and fracture the wells. It would go a long way to ease residents' minds if we knew what the plan to address that was, but the applicant has not presented their plans for changes to the roadway. What we do know is that Mr. Ghulie of Stahl Schaefer testified on October 14 that Middle Road Extension would be closed to traffic approximately 50% of the time. Based on Olympus--
Again, I'm going to object to the characterization of his testimony.
We'll note that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Based on Olympus's plans to continue to develop this site with an unknown number of additional wells for an unknown number of years to come, this becomes more than a one-time temporary inconvenience. That is, by any reasonable person's definition, a disturbance to the normal flow of traffic on a public street. Next up is a requirement to disclose the environmental impacts of the development. Introducing a new exhibit into evidence, this is Crowd Exhibit 34, calling it natural Per the ordinance, the applicant has an obligation to disclose environmental impacts of the proposed project. Mr. Blickenderfer and I discussed how the PNDI associated with the application has expired. He testified that he was unaware that any threatened or endangered species are currently recognized by the state of Pennsylvania in areas around the site. As of 2021, Deer Creek has been designated as a natural heritage area by the state of Pennsylvania. Along with this designation, two species of fish known to inhabit the rifle sections of Deer Creek were identified as threatened species in the state of Pennsylvania. These are the blue-breast darter and the tippy-canoos darter. This designation applies in the areas of Deer Creek in the vicinity of the proposed Dionysus site. So to point out the Dionysus site to you, it's approximately in this area right here. Deer Creek is the designated NHA core habitat. It's highlighted in yellow. We're up here towards the north in this little clearing is exactly where the Dionysus site would be. Throughout this process, the applicant has provided updated documentation to bolster their case for approval of this development, but by admitting the threatened species, the applicant has deprived the township of the ability to have a full picture of the environmental impact it will cause. Next up is a specific requirement related to the hall group. A specific requirement of the ordinance in relation to the hall group is that the operator "inventory the condition of the roads and provide video and photo documentation to On October 14, Mr. Ghulie, again from Stahl Schaefer, was asked directly if this had been done. He responded, "No." No evidence of this requirement has been-- Start over. No evidence of this requirement being fulfilled has ever been presented by the applicant and is not a part of the exhibits anywhere that I can see. Next up is a specific screening requirement. At this point, there's another exhibit, so this is the last one, Crowd Exhibit 35. This is an excerpt from Minutes at Murraysville Municipal Meeting. So highlighted, I believe it's on the back side of that. The ordinance requires pine trees to be planted around the fence wellhead. Mr. Blickenderfer testified that it's not possible to plant trees around the fence wellhead, and the applicant has asked to be exempted from these requirements. However, at a regular voting meeting in the municipality of Murraysville on October 16, 2019, Olympus proposed planting 57 evergreen trees, 6 deciduous trees, 18 shrubs around the outside of the Titan well pad. If the applicant has proposed planting trees around a well pad in Murraysville, I can think of no reason why they couldn't do the same here.
I'm going to object to this exhibit and Mr. Reszenetti's testimony regarding that, the different municipalities, different ordinance requirements. So relevance--
Sure. I mean, we're pretty lenient when it comes to relevance exhibits. We'll nurture--
That's one of them.
Understood. So we'll overrule the objection. Continue, Mr. Reszenetti.
And finally, at the very bottom of the compliance matrix, a reference to lighting. Our ordinance requires that at a well site, lighting shall be directed downward and inward. Mr. Blickenderfer testified that the lights on all of the Olympus sites he has been on have been directed downward and inward. When I asked him how many Olympus sites he had been to, he testified that he had only been to one site on only one occasion, only during the day. When presented with Crowd Exhibit 11, which is what's shown up there on the screen, showing a photo taken of Olympus's Pluto site from 1,800 feet away at nighttime, Mr. Blickenderfer declined to offer his observations in regard to the direction that the lights were pointed. Absent Mr. Blickenderfer's professional opinion, the photo speaks for itself. The applicant has presented no evidence that the requirements of this section of the ordinance can or will be satisfied. I've just demonstrated six ways that the conditional use application for the Dionysus deep well site does not meet the plain language requirements of the West Deer zoning ordinance. The witnesses that testified last week made us aware of how Olympus operations have negatively impacted residents in Elizabeth Township and Penn Township. As a community, we rely on the protections offered by our ordinance to protect our health, safety, and the general welfare of our community. Approving any application that does not fully comply, by definition, does not protect those things that we hold dear. The fact of the matter is that regardless of the specific reasons, all seven supervisors back in 2012 unanimously voted to enact our zoning ordinance to protect the health, safety, and the general welfare of our community. Anything less than enforcing those protections now would be a failure to provide the protections residents expected when they made West Deer their home and continue to expect now. Crowd asks that you deny this application. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Examination?
No.
Okay. All right. So any other witnesses or testimony or evidence on Mr. Reszenetti on behalf of Crowd?
None, sir.
Okay. Great. So, folks, we don't have a particular order for the next party objector, but tonight is the night, you know, theoretically, we could finish the party objector, so I need to move on to public comment. I'm not going to, you know, get overly optimistic on that front, but certainly we can get, hopefully, a healthy start on party objector testimony. So, sir, if you want to come up, you are the first volunteer party objector. And again, if you could identify yourself, state your name, spell your last name, and we'll turn it over to you.
My name is Tom Tisa, T-I-S-A. I live at 628 Whispering Pines Drive, Gibsonia, PA, 15044. I did have two things I'd like to ask. One is, may I give a copy of what I'm going to talk about to the court reporter? Does she have it?
Yeah, please give a copy to Mr. Lucas or Miss Condo over at his table, court reporter, and then it would be helpful for Board copies as well.
I don't have those. I have a copy of my presentation for Mr. Lucas, and I have a copy of what I'm going to say to the court reporter. I was going to ask Mr. Payne a question because this document, there's a lot of references back to reports that I generated off the PAD report, and I wanted to know how to enter them as exhibits, because I didn't want to enter this as an exhibit, and you all sit around a computer and click on these links to those documents.
Yeah, that may be the only way to do it that's going to be practical, is for folks to be able to do that. So what I'd suggest is, first off, if there's going to be an exhibit you're going to talk about, even if you only have one copy, give Mr. Lucas and Miss Condo an opportunity to review it. Why don't you do that now, so we can get that preliminary matter out of the way?
I do have two copies. I do. I think it'll be Tisa 3, I think.
Okay, so Tisa 3. So just so everyone's aware, my colleague, Ms. Beers over there to the right of Mr. Forbes, is going to be playing the role of Mr. Payne this evening, at least when it comes to sort of keeping us on track with exhibits. So we will make sure that gets marked as Exhibit 3, but again, if you could go ahead and give Mr. Lucas a gander before we admit that, and then if you have a copy you can give to the board while you're speaking, we can go ahead and at least have them take a look through it, and then we'll keep a copy for the exhibits. We just need one. So if you want to let him take a look at it, then we'll take it. So what you're looking at there, is that that's your testimony? So is that, are you just going to read that testimony? It looks like there's other things beyond just text in there, though.
Yeah, but there is--
Okay. All right. So why are you giving it to the court reporter, just so she can make sure she can accurately get your testimony down? Is that the reason? Okay. So is there anything in there that's not in here, beyond your written testimony? Because what's important is that we, that the Board gets a copy of what you intend to enter into evidence. So in some situations, we make the court reporter do that. We decided not to do that in this case, to keep her coming back, so that, you know, whatever you play to submit as evidence, we need a copy of before you leave here.
Okay. I'll give you-- You have an answer? You need to give me the copy.
Sure. Yeah, that's great. So we have both your written testimony with some reference information, and is this going to be marked as an exhibit? Is this Tisa 4?
Well, that was my question to Mr. Payne, how he wants to--
Yeah, we'll just keep going in order. So your written testimony with its references will be Tisa 4, and the information, the packet of information you've already provided to Mr. Lucas will be Tisa 3. Mr. Lucas, any objections to Tisa 3?
Yeah, I think we're going to have a number of objections, but the document, the house is all in place in terms of the topic that's discussing, so I don't know whether the witnesses and the gentleman is intending to walk down through this page by page. In this case, we can frame our objection, but I think it's fair to say parts of this are either hearsay or irrelevant due to your proceedings tonight, but if it covers just in the one minute we've had off to review it, it covers a wide variety of issues. I think the only way to address this ability is on a page-by-page basis, is to just testify.
Okay. So for right now, and again, we've been pretty open about accepting written documentation or testimony or evidence, but without understanding, you're reserving your right to object. Why don't we let Mr. Tisa begin his case, and then if there is an objectionable, whether it's a document or testimony, we can deal with it.
I think it's fair to say, just to frame what our objections are going to be as we walk through this, one, to the extent it's relying on third-party documents that the offer is not in his own, it's hearsay. We've already provided a memorandum to the solicitor on that. Secondly, to the extent it's in dealing with environmental issues, for example, constituents and-- That is not an issue that's relevant to this consideration. If this, I think, was noted previously, it may be subject to appropriate legislation by--
We can't hear. We're--
It may be subject to review by a partner for environmental protection, but it's not something that's a standard under the ordinance. The third objection, which I have a short memo that I'll provide you to prove the time, is the extent this witness testifies about things that are not within his personal knowledge. As a lay witness, we would object to those on the basis that they're not within his confidence. So as we walk through, those are the three buckets of objections I can see we're probably going to have here.
Okay. Well, thanks for that preliminary discussion. Mr. Tisa, we're just going to have to kind of work our way through our testimony, but I think the one thing that I will note, and I haven't had a chance to review anything you've just submitted, but, you know, when it comes, we've had this discussion, this is something for, I guess, everyone's identification. You know, we are limited to, the township is limited through zoning primarily to establish kind of where and under what conditions this operation can occur, the actual how, the chemicals that are used, things like that, you know, really more of a state-level DEP regulation. So I don't know what you're going to testify to, so we're going to, I'm not going to cut you off before you begin. So why don't you go ahead and present your case, and we'll deal with objections as they come.
Okay, thank you. So I gave my address. The red arrow between 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock is the approximate place where I live, Whispering Pines Drive. I'm a retired resident of West Deer. I have a science background. I was interested in learning about unconventional oil and gas operations to determine whether the operation proposed here would pose a threat to health, welfare of myself, to the community in which I now live. This is a quote from the investigating report of the grand jury of Pennsylvania on unconventional oil and gas, and it says that it's heavy industry requiring heavy construction, heavy trucks, heavy traffic. Wells are drilled thousands of feet into the ground horizontally for more than thousands of feet. They're lubricated with hazardous chemicals, and then they order that the shale rock has to be fractured using explosives and more chemicals to release the gas.
We'll note an objection to any reference to the grand jury report on hearsay grounds of oil and gas, and the solicitor on that issue.
Okay. We'll give Mr. Tisa some leeway here, especially at the beginning, to state his position, but we'll note your objection. Thanks.
This is the approximate time scheduled for the stage of the oil and gas. So the site preparations takes months, but the decision to install possibly five, 11, or 16 wells, repeating the drilling fracking, will have a generational impact lasting 30 The fracking fluid which is being used is approximately what's shown there, 85% water, 14% sand, and less than 1% chemicals.
Same objection. I don't know. The witness has not been qualified as an expert in a foundational way to discover where this information came from, and there's, again, the relevance issue with respect to what the requirements of the ordinance are.
So, I'm sorry, did my log?
Sure.
So this came from Frac Focus. That's the thing, if you link down and we take it, that's an organization that keeps a registry of the materials that's supplied by companies like Olympus Gas to be put into that database for what chemicals they use and the amount of water.
So just, I mean, and I certainly understand that, but again, when it comes to the components of frac water, as you refer to it, I mean, that's not something that the township can take into consideration or is relevant to their determination. So, you know, we're not going to be able to spend a whole lot of time. I want to give you some leeway, because you've been sitting here patiently for seven, six hearings or whatever, so we'll give you some-- whatever, so we'll give you some leeway, but again, we're not going to be able to hear, you know, a significant amount of testimony regarding the actual kind of nuts and bolts of the operation of hydraulic fracturing. This is not a, this is not the form for, you know, essentially complaints about the industry or how it operates, because that's beyond the scope of what we can regulate. What you need to focus on is what the ordinance requirements are, and whether or not the application plans meet those ordinance requirements, and to the extent that there's something specific to this site and this operation that relates to health, safety, and welfare that's not applicable across the board to the industry, we could hear that as well. But just general commentary about sort of the dangers of fracking, you know, while I don't, I'm not downplaying that concern, and I'm not taking a position one way or the other, this is just not the proper form for that.
Okay, okay, but what I get into is the exact composition of the water that Olympus, or the fracking fluids that Olympus has used, and probably will use here, and I just wanted to show the people how much material is put there, what's left in the ground, and stuff like that.
Yeah, but again, that's not something, we don't have ordinance provision, because we can't, we're not allowed, we're superseded by state law as to those aspects of the drilling operation, so, you know, whether you're correct or whether you're not, is not something that the board can take into account when making its determination in this case. Again, not downplaying the concern or even the veracity of the information you're providing, but just trying to keep us on track when it comes to what this board's allowed to consider, because there's obviously been a lot of information already received, primarily related to, you know, ordinance requirements, which is really the relevant testimony here. So, you know, having taken a little bit more of a flip through your presentation now, I'm seeing a lot related to the how and the general kind of concerns about hydraulic fracturing, and I'm just telling you, that's not something the board is able to take into account when making its decision.
Okay, so I probably should just move ahead.
I think so, I mean, just for efficiency sake, to the extent you can, again, tie it to, you know, this particular zone, the relevant zoning ordinance provisions, or this particular site, some aspect of this particular site that's specific to the site rather than industry-wide or, you know, ordinance-wide, for lack of a better term, that's what the board needs to hear.
This was brought up during, as part of the building, when they looked at the, when they looked at the chemical, they specifically gave a recommendation that the applicant should not use one particular carcinogen, it was one of the recommendations.
This is, just, I think, for everyone's clarification, this is from one of the planning commission recommendations, correct? I mean, you know, the planning commission recommendations have been submitted as an exhibit to this proceeding, we'll give you some leeway here, we'll rule the objection on this particular item, so go ahead and dust them out.
All right, thank you. So what I just wanted to bring up is that the chemical, this methyl oxerane, was used in Midas 2, 4, and 6, but it wasn't used in Apollo 7, 9, I should put another one, a different chemical was used. So my only point here is that they shouldn't have the trouble meeting that recommendation to the township of not using that chemical. My second concern is that I looked at the demographics of the people that live in the area, I had used the zip code 15044, and approximately 43% of the people are either under the age of 18, or they're over 65 years of age. So then, my second concern is that 43.5% of the population, they're in early developmental phases, or they have age-related health issues, and they're going to be in close proximity to this heavy industrial activity. There is an oil and natural gas production quarterly report, and they report on the number of formal health complaints, and there's been 138 since 2011. The concerns of these people that had the environmental, the health complaints were in order, there were water, air, noise, traffic, and other. And then with health, the same number of people, the health information of those people, that this is the complaints they had, again, a decrease in order was respiratory, neurological, general systemic, gastrointestinal, dermatological.
Same relevance objection, any allegations? Same relevance objection, these are health and safety issues beyond the scope of the township jurisdiction, the jurisdiction of how many, what this registry is, where it came from, what well sites, or what the like.
Mr. Tisa, is there anything specific to this particular site that's referenced in this portion of your testimony or evidence?
So these are well sites all over Pennsylvania, this is all over Pennsylvania. They specifically did counties, I did not include that information about the counties.
Okay, I'm going to supersede the objection, if you could just move on to your next slide or subject.
So, again, my issue here with this was 138 was not insignificant, but these are people that are experiencing health issues, and again, the grand jury reported that one of the reasons these numbers were low was because the Department of Health did not do a good job convincing people to use their, you know, their complaint hotline and stuff like that. This is Olympus' web page, they have two pulldown tabs, environmental, social, and governance, where they say that they will relentlessly focus on our guiding principles to reduce operational impact and striving for operational excellence, and then the next tab, is they can commit to maintain a safe, clean, and compliant work environment for their employees, contractors, and neighbors, and that they would do their operation during completion of every task every day. So again, not again, but Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code said it was the intent, purpose, and scope of this act to protect, promote, safety, health, and morals. To accomplish this, I think, the Westier Planning Commission proposed 52 recommendations. One of those recommendations was Recommendation 2B, which stated that the applicant shall at all times, with all applicable laws and regulations of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the United States federal government, as they relate to activities conducted by the applicant with the township. This is Olympus' violation history, from January 2016 to June 30th, 2021. This is from the P A D E P, this is, they have a database, they have report generating capabilities on oil and gas compliance, this is their data, they're the ones that do the inspections, that's what we hired them to do, is to look out for this, and there's 302 violations, over $300,000 fines to date. The violations range from erosion, sediment control, discharge releases of waters, general discharge permits, and signed in secondary containment and well integrity. So if the level of compliance, this is the level of compliance of one of the unconventional oil and gas industries, that's my concern, because our board would have liked us, or the recommendation from the building commission was to have total compliance at all times. This is another report that you can obtain from the P A D E P's website, this is the amount of wells that are drilled, unconventional wells. I use that data to also go against the, using P A D E P's website, you can look at the compliance record of the same operators, and we looked at the number of violations and confused violations divided by unconventional wells, and the violations per well drilled is on the right-hand side, the median for this group is a little under 3, and Olympus Energy comes in around three times that middle number. I also looked at, again, I could pull, I could pull down the amount of gas that each well operator produces for the same time period, and this time, I did 1,000 cubic feet of gas generated per violation, and you can see the range goes from SWN products down to Olympus Energy, where Olympus Energy is the lowest, they produce the less amount of gas for the, per violation. Also looked at the violations by the same group of operators by year, and just to show the preponderance of their violations are environmental health and safety, not just administrative, not to say administrative violations are something that should be I looked at two incidents, the first one occurred at Olympus 3, I think this is 3M. The inspection, it wasn't inspection, there was a release of a material which was water-soaked, drill cuttings onto a pad, 95% reported to be on the pad, 5% on the ground. The spill occurred at 4:30 in the morning. Yeah, it was Apollo, it was Apollo 3M, that's right. So the spill caused 4:30, a representative of Olympus showed up at 6:45, surveyed the situation, and then called the D E P hotline at 8:08. Operator's representative provided an email to the D E P based on that original inspection, it was never inspection, this is all email and telephone conversation, he's saying that no more than five barrels of material was released, a barrel is, as y'all know, 42 gallons, so this is 210 gallons of material, and it was deposited on and off containment, there was no waterway threat or impact. Go ahead. Again, they keep referencing back to the original inspections, and they're saying it's a release of no more than five barrels, again, they say it's water-soaked, it was carried by the wind, so some of it did get off onto the pads, berm, the side of where the pad is, but the quantity released is unknown, but it's more than one barrel, again, a barrel is 42 gallons, and they, they do not believe released fluids reached any of the drains. Violations are being issued. This is the material safety data sheet that was supplied by Olympus to the D E P, even though they called it a soap, it's really not a soap, it's a synthetic misty metalworking Chemically, it's, you can look up the C A S number, we didn't go through all that, so the C A S number is a chemical, it's a number that indicates a specific chemical, that chemical is triethanolamine. Okay, go ahead, it's not a soap. So now, now they're saying that there's releases of no more than five barrels, water-soaked drilling, the drilling with air, quantity outside is unknown, but it's more than one barrel, and they're going to, think they're going to remediate the site with ACT 2 standards. ACT 2 is a way to voluntarily clean up an industrial waste site, or an industrial site that has some contamination. They requested the material safety data sheet, which they did provide, and they wanted a written report. So this is the, this is the violation, the violation, the D E P, P A D E P reports the same thing that they were given, it's a barrel of soap water and drilling cuttings, when they occurred, how long, what the violation's for is they did not report, they, being Olympus, did not do it within two hours. And they said more than five gallons. So just to go over this one more time, the original estimate was 95% on the pad, 5% on the ground, they're trying to determine accurate quantities, now they talk, there's no more than five barrels, that's 210 gallons released, released fluids remain on the pad, some on the western pad, the quantity released off containment is unknown, but it's more than one barrel, so the estimate that's off the pad now is 20%, not 5%. And the D E P's never come on the site yet to, to see what is going on. This is Olympus' Exhibit A, Tab 5-7, this is their notification requirements, this is the PPC, the Prepare and Miss Prevention contingency plan that Olympus has given to the township. It says that when there may be a release, the employee must immediately identify the emergency response coordinator listed in Appendix B, and then all releases that occurred initially must be evaluated by the ERC or DESI, and they report on the federal and state oil pollution. This is the list of people that are given, these are the individuals, the emergency response coordinators. The first one in line was contacted, but like I said, by the time that gentleman had already gotten on site, the two hours had already elapsed, so he was already late for So since there was more than one emergency response coordinators, the Pennsylvania Development and Nitrification Environmental Emergency Response Plan Document 400-2200-001 states that if there's more than one listed, one must be named as the primary coordinator, and others shall be listed in the order in which they assume responsibility. And the guidelines also state that at all times, there must be at least one employee either on the installation's premises or on call with responsibility for coordinating all emergency response measures. Like I said, there was a two hour and 15 minutes before someone even came on, and it was over three hours before the D E P was notified. This again is in Olympus' PPC plan, it's Exhibit A, there's four criteria for Pennsylvania notification, one is the chemical, two is the media that's affected, it either threatens the waters of the state or doesn't, and then there's a minimum amount, it's usually five gallons, and then the verbal notification is no more than two hours. This is the incident that occurred on Apollo 5M, it was a half-inch plug during stimulation, which is the hydraulic fracking, the plug, I guess, became dislodged and caused a release of fluid. The violations from the D E P were, the half-inch plug and the flame was part of the well how the assembly failed, causing loss of control of the well, and the violation was operated, failed to construct and operate the well in accordance with 25 PA Code 78. Ensure the integrity of the well is maintained, health, safety, environment, and property are protected. are protected. This is, public's response to that violation. They call it a well control issue. Go ahead. They were, while they were fracking, it says 1250, downhole fluids, well cellar, that's a, I guess, a location underneath the well that can capture these fluids. They said no fluid escaped off the pad. And then at 2238 hours, the final plug was set. So I don't know if that, that time difference is, say it's 10, 11 hours, if that was a total time, so if the well was not under control, or it's just it took them that long to, to get plugs installed in the well. They did have boots and coots and forefront emergency management, those are their emergency contractors out of Texas. They go through a lot of checks and balances to make sure that the casing is not damaged. They were gonna provide a preliminary root cause. I did not see one in the PADP, so. So this is kind of just their surface activity inspection report. Again, they report things, the date, what was going on, the, the time. Fire department was not notified. I don't know if fire department should have been notified. It would have been, I guess, a good idea to identify them, to at least know that if something was going on, we would not have to respond to the site. They give different times. At the time inspector was on site, which is approximately 4:00 PM, when the event started at 12:50, the well was not under control. They did check the different drain systems, and they did not observe material off the well pad. They took conductivity readings. I guess that's an indicator of the total dissolved solids. Levels of over 1,000, you'll see in a minute, that's indicative of a, of a solution that has acid or salts in it. It also gives an indication whether things are flowing. So if, if, if they're not flowing, then the, I guess the numbers would not go down. This is a water conductivity, that's the reference I use for, over 1,000 indicates that there's a percentage of acid bases and salts. These are pictures that the PADP took at the, at the time of the event. So this is fluid on the well pad. This is the west side of the well pad flowing off, I'm sorry, off containment into the pad drain. This is the east side of the well pad. There's water sheen, this is the, oh, this is sheen, I don't know if it's an erosion. It's a, it's a sheen was observed on the, on the water. There's a keyway drain. I'll show you a picture in a minute where this is, but that was the drain that showed a small flow. This is one of the Olympus exhibits. This was something that was submitted just to show you where the key drains are and the perimeter drains drain. On the, the guidelines for the, for the preparing of the PPC plan, it says to describe the sources in areas where potential spills and leaks may occur, the direction of flow, spill materials and pollution incident prevention practices, provide separate drawings, plan, plot plans showing source and quantities and materials and waste. Plan should indicate a prediction of the direction of flow of the materials spilled and result of equipment failure, accident, or human error. This is the plot plan that's in the exhibit. It's very, it's very simplistic. It doesn't show a lot of equipment, and it shows the direction, but it's just two directions. And we've, we've seen at least two incidents where spilled material did get beyond the, the fence that goes around it. Some was sprayed on a berm. This was the site at the day, this is the site, what the site looked like at the day of the incident. There's brine storage tanks, the blue arrow. There's another storage tank in the back of where the green arrow is. There's trucks, equipment. None of that is shown on the PPC plot plan. This was an Exhibit A, Tab 4. You can see where it was supplied. It shows the mechanics of a proposed drilling layout. This could be something that they could use, because it shows all the equipment that was there on the day of the drilling of the other facility, and just add arrows to show the direction of where spills could go. There's more, more information on this is on the plot plan. Again, this is in the PPC plan. It says identify a list of common chemical names, trade names, locations, sources, quantities of raw chemical materials, commercial chemical products, et cetera, et cetera. This information's needed because you want to know where the material is in case you have leaks or spills, so you can identify quickly what the material is. You'll know what the material, you know the quantity on hand, whether you've reached report quantity. This is what's in the PPC plan that Olympus did provide to the board. It says that this list of ways present on site will be including this plan once materials are present on location from the waste is generated on site. This is a prepare-ness plan, it should identify these things beforehand, and-
You know, I've given the witness pretty great leeway here in terms of relevance to this, but just give way. Can you hear? I love it. You want to use this?
Yeah. Look at your face.
Mr. Lucas, we have one for you. See, all you need to do is ask, and we can deliver. I didn't know I had this, I apologize.
Again, we have raised an objection, and we'll allow the witness to go through his testimony. At this point, though, he's finding as to what DEP's requirements are for, for PPC plan, and that's clearly beyond the relevance of these proceedings.
Mr. Tisa, do you have your response to that objection?
If you don't mind, the zoning ordinance does state that PPC plans should be in compliance with DEP guidelines, Document 400-2200-001.
So I mean, and it would, that's true, and it would be required, but what's the relevance of the testimony that you're providing to that requirement?
Well, what I'm trying to show is that there's, there's items in the PPC plan now that don't meet those requirements.
The PPC plan that was submitted with this obligation?
Yes, sir.
And I think there's been testimony, though, that this was the draft in a final PPC plan that was submitted closer to the time that it was actually-
Folks, folks, we've been really good so far, and I appreciate everyone's patience throughout, but like that, that's just not helpful to the process here. So, you know, I think, I think it's, it's close enough to be relevant based on what's been submitted, that will allow Mr. Tisa to continue on, but I, I would ask, you know, to kind of keep, keep things moving here with this final testimony. Thanks.
Yes, sir. So do you want me to go through the list, or do you understand the list?
I mean, if, if you've submitted in writing the deficiencies, certainly you're, you're free to, through your testimony to highlight it. Mr. Lucas has already stated his position regarding, you know, Olympus's supplement to what, that they may supplement that PPC plan. However, you know, it's, it's relevant, I think at least close enough for this proceeding, for you to provide that testimony. Again, I just ask you to see if you can find maybe an efficient way to, to maybe hit the highlights and-
Yes, sir.
Kind of keep moving. Thanks, sir.
So there's no named primary emergency response coordinator. The remaining emergency response coordinator, emergency response coordinators need to be in the order that they would be called. The current plan does not do that. There's, there's two different orders. There's no addresses for the emergency response coordinators. There's no chemical inventory or waste inventory. They do not describe the sources and area where potential spills and leaks may occur. They do not provide separate drawings, plot plans, showing sources and quantities of materials and waste. And then the last thing I would say is that if, if they are going to, the requirement is that if they, they're gonna, if there is a list of missing or incomplete aspects of the plan, then they should submit a schedule of what those elements are in a timeframe, and when it's gonna be done. So this is just the, the final of that whole incident, we can do that. So the violations were a failure to take necessary measures to prevent substances from directly or indirectly reaching the waters of the Commonwealth through accident, carelessness, maliciousness, hazard weather, or other causes. They did submit a request for an ACT 2 cleanup. I won't go through the whole thing, it was denied by the DEP. Go ahead. Yeah, keep going. So it was, it was denied, which, which meant that the site now is, is, would have to be cleaned up, it's, it's got contamination on it. The state went back out almost a year later, they went back on 7/14/2020. Because of this ACT 2 report, or the mediation report, was denied. It says that there's no additional or recent remediation on the done, and then they turned around and gave them another set of violations for not storing material in secondary containers. Those, those are the violations that came out of that. So almost a year later, nothing had been done on the site. So that was one of my concerns, was the system of checks and balances that we're told the DEP is gonna look out for our health and safety. I'm not sure that that's, that's, I'm not sure that's totally true. They're doing the best job they can do. They're not always showing up on the sites when there's spills. They're taking the operators' work for it, which I guess they can do, but we're being asked to say that they're in compliance with the regulations. These are just two instances of violations. So my conclusion was that it does propose a risk of a hazardous event that puts heavy industrial activities with health effects in close proximity to sensitive residents. The compliance record of the unconventional oil and gas operators does not indicate that we comply at all times, and that safeguards may not be robust enough to protect environmental health and safety of these residents. So I humbly ask you to not approve both, dying to the well pad. I thank you for your patience and understanding, and I thank Mr. Lucas.
So, so thank you, Mr. Tisa. Mr. Lucas, you know, we, first of all, obviously, you have the opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Tisa. I do want to address the two exhibits that men submitted first.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I mean, I reiterate my position with respect to Exhibit 3. With respect to Exhibit 4, I haven't seen it. And if at all it is, is kind of the summary of what this gentleman, this has testified to, I, I don't see any reason why I should be included in the record.
So, this is kind of tricky, because there are some things in there that I think are not objectionable, but certainly there are things that, you know, based on the rulings that we've made during his testimony, that, that are out of bounds. What I'd, what I'd suggest, just for the sake of efficiency to keep things moving, is that we allow those exhibits to be submitted with the understanding that anything that was subject of the objections that you made, or in line with those same objections regarding relevance hearsay, that they be given, you know, no consideration by the board consistent with the rulings of his, in his testimony.
I think if he had just been moving things along, that's a good approach.
Okay, thanks. Cross-examination?
We have no questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tisa, appreciate your time. All right, folks, who's next? Looks like we have a volunteer, come on down. Again, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and begin your testimony.
My name is Laston Luttrell, we're with Corcoran, Pennsylvania, 15044. I just want to set up your primary. The first is comprised of essentially my-
Do you understand the court's justice?
Yeah, I think whatever you're comfortable with. Thank you very much. There's three documents here. One of the, the top one comprises my testimony. The second one is, are the, are the charts incorporated in the testimony. And the third one is a report from the EPA, a tool that they call the ACS Screen Summary Report. Okay? So that's what we've got. So with that will be, see if I can start stepping us through here.
Okay. Maybe just for the record, why don't we mark these firsts?
Sure.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
It's B-E-N-N-E-T-T.
So we'll use number one, will be the written testimony. Two will be that chart one. And EJ Screen ACS Summary Report would be Bennett, three.
Perfect. I think that, I think that works perfectly.
Just, just hold on, before you begin, I think, let's give counsel an opportunity to just take an initial run through as we, Mr. Tisa.
Absolutely. No worries.
Bennett, one appears to be, I guess, summary of what Mr. Bennett's testimony might be. It primarily seems to address air pollution, water pollution, noise, and radioactive emissions. Based on some previous rulings, we have multiple objections here. Number one, Bennett hasn't been called by any form of expert, I think we should point that out. But more importantly, the exception of noise, that is a legitimate, according to the ordinance, all these other items are environmental issues regulated by DEP or with respect to air, an Alligant County, by the Alligant County Health Department. We previously submitted a memo. This is A, not relevant to the requirements under the ordinance, and B, critically relates to, to air emissions, and I argue also radiation. The township, it's not only subject of the ordinance, the township is preempted from regulating those issues. Bennett, number two appears to be a document identifying various forms of air pollution and toxic substances. There is a reference to some sound modeling in there. And then Exhibit number three is a environmental justice screen summary of some sort, dealing with demographics. I would object to all of these and any testimony related to the items in these documents, with the exception of noise, because they're not, they're not requirements under the ordinance. This gentleman's not an expert, and in large part preempted by other entities.
So I, I do think, I, I did see some written testimony regarding sound as well.
Right.
And noise, you mentioned noise you didn't have objection to. Are you objecting to the sound testimony?
Not at this time, depending on what the gentleman has to testify. With respect to everything else, it's not a subject of the ordinance, and it's preempted by other regulatory authorities.
Mr. Bennett, do you, do you have a response? I mean, I, you know, I do have, I have to make, I have to be consistent from what, from objector to objector, so.
Absolutely. So I do. So I guess the point of it is that, I would have started out with was going through the application made by the applicant. And in it, it ticks off a number of different environmental problems that are going to cause, or environmental considerations that are being caused by the well, the well drilling. So I went through that. So I went through them methodically, and just wanted to point out, I think, where it is that they, that it needs to be called to the attention of the Board of Supervisors in their capacity of needing to pay attention to the health, safety, and well-being of West Deer residents, that these things have specific points that have not been addressed by the applicant, in my opinion.
I guess that the issue I have, and the same, it's sort of the same situation with Mr. Tesa, is, you know, things like air quality, for instance. Not quibbling as to whether it's relevant to health, safety, and welfare, it's not something that this board can take into account when making its determination, because the air quality information you're referencing relates to air quality issues that are subject, that all fracking operations would be subject to. So, so that's not, for the same reason that we uphold the, held the objection from Mr. Tesa, we have, I have to uphold that objection as well regarding air quality. Water quality, you know, again, is a DEP regulation. If these folks don't comply with the DEP regulations, then they have to deal with the DEP. But the township cannot say, "We think that this is dangerous to the water because of the chemicals you're using," because those chemicals, if they're approved by DEP, whether we like them or not, we're stuck with them. So, you know, it's not maybe a perfect solution, but, you know, I think, I kept Mr. Tesa to elements that were--
Sure.
You know, in the ordinance itself. So I think certainly you can testify with respect to sound, to the extent it's not expert test, you know, expert opinion testimony.
Not expert opinion.
And then the same for, the same for noise, that noise and sound.
Sound and noise. Well, interestingly, my water, the portion I was going after with water, really had nothing to do with the chemicals per se, except ingentuline. What I was going after there was basically, for the most part, people that live in the general area there are served by large companies like Hampton Shear or Water Authority, that kind of stuff. But a point that I wanted to make was that there's a number of people in the vicinity of the well who are not, they're served by private wells. And so, I saw nothing in any of the materials that were provided, and maybe they're there, but I just missed them, that showed that there's going to be a baseline water test of all the private wells done. And who's going to pay for that? And then, as it goes on, who pays over the course of the multi-decade line for these wells? Who pays for that? Is that something that we would expect Olympus to pick up?
So there is a well testing provision in the zoning code, so I agree with you there. So I think we can have some limited testimony on that, you know, we'll deal with that as it comes. But again, when it comes down to emissions from the actual, just the operation, when it comes down to, you know, byproducts of the operation, again, the kind of, the theme here is, it relates to the operation of fracking generally. It's not something that this board can consider, it's not relevant, and I have to uphold the objection as it relates to those items.
Okay. If I could comment, I mean, in making these objections, we're not discounting the importance of various environmental concerns, but this isn't the body to address this, there are other entities that do that. I would note with respect to even on water or noise, I mean, this witness, it's not just a general testimony about impacts of water, on water, or noise across the industry are not relevant. What is relevant is if there's something specific and abnormal about this site with respect to those issues. That's standard under applicable law in terms of general health and safety concerns, is that you can't just say, "Oil and gas bad, or we're concerned about water," you have to tie it to something specific as to this particular site.
And I understand, and I think I tried to convey that, but there is a provision in this zoning ordinance that relates to water testing. So, since I haven't heard the testimony, I don't, you know, I'm hesitant to preemptively rule on what he might say, and I haven't read this yet. So, with those parameters in place, and I know that was a long-winded response to the objection, but do you understand what we're going to permit and what we're not going to?
I think that, I think I do, and I think I can truncate the testimony, and I'll focus on some things that I think would be within, and if it's not, then call me on it, and that's fine.
I'm sure Mr. Lucas will be willing to call you.
I have no doubt.
I'll, I will react accordingly.
I feel good about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you to the board and to you, Mr. Rob, for creating this forum here. Just by way of background, though, I was requested sometime in, I guess, early 2020, a member of the Woodlands HWA Board asked me to monitor the West Deer Planning Commission hearings regarding the proposed well pad development by Olympus. And so, I attended planning sessions, I started attending these, I did all of the collection. I also went around and just chatted with people in the, in the area, in my neighborhood, and almost a person, they were deeply concerned about this. So I don't think that that comes as a surprise, you see the turnout here, but notwithstanding that, I guess the one thing that they said to me, and I'd like to just get into the record here, is basically they said, "Look, you know, DEP, West Deer Township, really, if this goes forward, what's really in it for us? What benefit drives to us?" You're asking, the company is asking us to shoulder some significant risks, and so what do we, what could we expect in return? Is there some kind of benefit that we could look at? I promise to come and take that message to you, folks. What I'm going to do is, I'll go past the air pollution portion of this thing. I think there's useful information there, supported by experts, but I understand that I haven't got the swing to get people from the EPA, but they all are sourced and propped on. Just, if you would, just go for a second there, go to-- Go to chart two A. I want to say sourced here, go ahead and just put that up there. Yeah, so what I tried to do was, the original, if you look in the, if you look in the document itself, it's an eye chart, right? It comes out of a natural resources defense document, but part of it is, it goes, this goes right at the notion of what kinds of things could happen to a person if they were exposed to this kind of--
Say the objection here.
I understood, but I guess my point in--
Mr. Bennett--
All right, we're going, we're going, we're moving on. And anything, no, it's not, nope, we'll let it go. I'll tell you what, then, let's do this, let's go to the sound impact model. I was present at the hearing in which the representative of Acoustical Control LLC presented his testimony on the sound impact study dated October 25th, 2019. This study included Olympus Exhibit A, Table 11. So there's a section of the study that's used to describe, this is going to be chart five, thank you, how it was, and I'm not going to take you through it, except to say, I'm not going to read it all, because it's already in the record, but I will point out the fact that it does exclude road traffic and conditions around that. And, and so I looked at that, and I thought to myself, "Okay, that's interesting." It's notable that the study specifically excludes traffic noise. In the course of his testimony, the Acoustical Control representative indicated that industry best practices used to conduct this study regarding traffic noise is transient and excluded. So industry best practices discards the need to model and incorporate predictions of sound of a six-truck convoy on State Route 910. They exclude this noise even though these convoys will be conducted virtually 24 hours a day, seven days a week, while the wells are being drilled and completed. With this predictable level of regular truck traffic, it seems to me that noise created by the convoys should not be considered transient, and should be accounted for in their study. And it appears that the software vendor that they use, that Acoustical Control use, I'm going to kill this, I apologize, Rull, and I think it's JAR, K-J-A-E-R, they have a software offering that is able to measure traffic noise. The offering is called Vehicle Bypass Noise Software, remarkably enough. I took a screenshot of the product offering, if you could go to the next one. It's an eye chart there, but essentially what it says is this, it said-- No, that's right. "To help reduce traffic noise, regulators set bypass noise limits for each type of ground vehicle that must be met before a vehicle's allowed on public roads. When they're performing a pass-by noise test outdoors on an ISO-compliant test track, or indoors on a chassis dynamometer in a large hemi-echoic chamber, our user-friendly bypass software with built-in standards and regulations covers the full range of drop-by testing. Our indoor pass-by software connects directly to the outdoor pass-by noise database to enable tire noise correction for type approval in compliance with ISO 362-3 standard." My point in bringing this up is that it was, it was noted that it was a, an industry best practice. I think an industry best practice would be one that said, "If you're measuring all sounds associated with an operation, measure all, if you can." And it appears as though there is software available, and there are methods available to be able to do this. And so, I guess I question, why isn't it? Given that this is going to be something that will go around the clock, and it's fairly predictable as to it, and that in itself would cause it not to be transient, I guess is my point. Let's see here. I'll tell you what, I'm going to blow by some of the other things, certainly radioactive emissions, but I do want to bring to bear, let me just, if I may, read my conclusion. "As I considered the information obtained in planning committee documents and hearings, information conveyed in these public hearings, and the information presented in this case regarding each of the pollutants, I was intended to be struck by the lack of full disclosure of the size and impact of the project. In my 40-plus-year career in sales and marketing, I had the privilege of working on a number of large projects with Fortune 500-sized clients. If I attempted to offer a limited view of project scope, cost, and benefit during the proposal phase of the project, I can assure you there was no chance the client would consider it, and I would justifiably be asked to leave. I understand the conditional use application is confined to the construction of the well pad site. As has been referenced several times in the course of these hearings, the well pad is not a standalone project. References to a pig launcher in public hearing number five, and items like the interconnect facility that is separate from the well pad, mentioned in the same hearing, are proof that there are multiple elements to this project that are not considered here. The construction and operation of this collective set of facilities will place a large industrial installation with a very large footprint in the midst of a highly residential area of West Deer." So this makes references, next thing makes reference to this EPA screening document, this tool. So, the chart eight, that's it, defines a 1.25-mile radius around the Dionisus well pad. It illustrates the area, and it uses a tool, the tool itself uses a, the American Community Survey data provided by the U.S. Census Bureau to supply population data. This area is attached to the case, but here's an outtake of the report that I hope that the board will consider. In that 1.25-mile area, there are 4,122 people, comprising 1,768 households. The Board of Supervisors must ask itself if it makes sense to place a large, highly industrialized site that emits air, water, noise, and radioactive pollutants in the midst of thousands of people, all who purchased their homes with a reasonable expectation of living in a quiet residential neighborhood. The fact that the construction and operation will have a direct sustained negative impact on the health and well-being of West Deer residents, people who will receive little if any benefit in return for the multiple risks they will be forced to bear, the project simply can't be completed without considering each of the deeply negative environmental impacts it brings along with the full project scope. It's not clear to me or my fellow Woodlands residents how a decision to approve it would be consistent with the board's duty to protect the health, safety, and welfare of West Deer residents. I respectfully ask that the board reject this application. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any cross-examination, Mr. Lucas?
No.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, that's all we have for you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And your efforts. All right, we have about 15 or so minutes before our first break, so we certainly have time to start and maybe even finish another party objector. So whoever is up next, just come on up. Take your time. To go back on the record, if our party objector, Ms. Austin, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Austin is ready with her case, we can go ahead and get started.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Austin, 19 Hemlock Street, Bearcourt, PA. Good evening. I have some facts to present, and also some concerns that I'd like to talk to the board about. It is my understanding that the Olympus Dionisus well pad has to comply with West Deer ordinances as it was submitted. The plan submitted fails to meet that requirement. There are several pre-existing buildings within the 650-foot required setback. Also, the emergency response plan is incomplete. The document states at the highlighted area, the following information provides details concerning Olympus Energy's Dionisus well pad, and includes, but is not limited to, and the last bullet point states, parcel map, this is separate and different than the site evacuation map in the bullet point above it. There's no parcel map, there's no list of residents between one half-mile, and there's no list of residents within one mile in the emergency response plan. It is incomplete, those pages do not exist. I reiterate, the emergency response plan is woefully incomplete. Now let's look at the site evacuation map from the bullet point above the missing portion of the plan. This was Olympus, tab five, page 16, emergency response plan.
Can you brighten that up?
Yeah, that's what we're going to try and do. This map represents thousands of, the households of thousands of residents. First of all, this map is outdated. For example, it does not include the Copper Creek Carriage Homes community. I believe this map is from 2019, there's been building since then, in the past two years. Those of us residing within these circles are at risk of evacuation. We are vulnerable, and we feel vulnerable, with no plan in place on how that would occur, where will we go, contingencies for potential roadway closures near the well site, and what measures we need to protect our families and pets, and who would be financially responsible. Also of note, there are homes included on the Dionisus well evacuation plan that are, show the neighboring townships of Richland and Hampton, with homes there, including, but not limited to, Bruton Drive, Allison Road, Jetty Drive, McIntyre Road, McAlffroad, Stag Drive, and West Stag Drive. Has there been outreach to officials of our neighboring townships to ensure that all potentially impacted residents are aware? Has there been any coordination whatsoever with Richland and Hampton? Since the list of residence portion of Olympus's plan is incomplete, it disadvantages and potentially harms West Deer citizens, and also those in our neighboring townships. The checkoff sheet for the proposed well pads states that if approved, it will generate air pollutants, water pollutants, noise, and radioactive emissions. air pollutants, water pollutants, noise, and radioactive emissions. Why would we accept this when we're having a look towards the welfare of residents? None of these checked items serve in any way, shape, or form to protect and promote the safety, health, or welfare of our community and residents. In fact, they do the opposite. Yes, this would be Austin, exhibit three, grand jury cover sheet. And I'm just going to give some of my concerns after reading the grand jury report that was filed in June of 2020.
To the extent we're intending to introduce any portion of this grand jury reporting to the record, we would object on the basis primarily of hearsay, that's number one. But number two, unless the witness can establish a foundation that there is any mention of Olympus, any mention of West Deer Township, or any mention of the Dionysus well pad in the report, it is simply not relevant to these proceedings. And, Mr. Solicitor, I do have a memorandum on this issue, too.
All right, I'll take a look, Mr. Lucas. And I guess on the hearsay issue, it's a publicly available document, we're not bound by hearsay, but when it comes to the relevance argument, you know, and trying to stay consistent with the rulings of prior, for prior party objectors, you know, you heard the objection, I'll take a moment to review this memorandum, but, you know, we've already essentially upheld objections that relate to the overall, kind of, the fracking use, concerns about fracking in general, right? And I think, I haven't read exactly what you submitted, because you just submitted it, but to the extent that it just pertains to the industry in general, or the activity in general, to be consistent, I would have to keep that out. But I'll allow you to take a moment to review what Mr. Lucas has provided, and then, you know, you can respond before I make a ruling. I'll also take a moment to review. Do you have any response? But I don't think, personally, I, you know, just kind of tip off as to where I'm heading, because I'm not sure we need to get to any of the hearsay issues. I would tend to agree that this really relates to the industry in general rather than Olympus or this particular site, but do you have any argument to the contrary?
Well, this public available government document is considered a reliable source. It's to be trusted, the Attorney General's office, and I just have a small concern on something that was mentioned in here. I'm not going into, deeply into this report, so could I present what I was going to say, and then the board is free to weigh it as they see fit.
Not to the extent that it relates to the, again, you know, I did not allow Mr. Teesa or Mr. Bennett, right, to provide that type of testimony, so it wouldn't be fair to allow it here. I just need to be consistent. So I'm gonna sustain the objection. Teesa, whatever, or I'm sorry, Austin, this is four, three, will not be admitted in evidence.
Okay, without referring to that report, tanker trucks transporting hazardous chemicals to a well are required to be labeled as carrying hazmat. However, when transporting wastewater from the wells, they're labeled as residual waste, although this water can be highly radioactive. If one of these trucks would overturn and spill, the public and responders are placed at risk. This includes those living, working, and driving along the 910 corridor, including neighboring Richland Township. It also endangers the Deer Creek Waterway. This will be Austin, exhibit four.
The purpose of the record, the video apparently seemed to play.
Before, yeah, before we play.
We were already told that there will be convoys of water trucks. These are typical fracking water trucks on a convoy in Milford, New Milford, PA, and this was taken on the 24th of January.
We're gonna dock your page, Tim, if you don't mind.
Go for it, I understand.
We're not gonna do the entire minute, right?
Same objection, there's been no foundation laid. Same objection, there's been no foundation laid as to what this is, whether Ms. Austin is personally familiar with what was being videoed here, and there's been no tie to any operations of Olympus. And I don't even know where New Milford, PA is. I don't think it's anywhere in this part of the state.
So I think, you know, we did allow some of the video, I'm not gonna, you know...
Okay, it's almost done.
But I think your point is taken, and I'm not sure we need to address the objection. It's presented presumably as an example of the activity that might occur in relation to this project.
Right.
We'll overrule the objection, but I don't think we need to see any more of it.
As stated by Olympus, noise will be generated, not just by the drilling operations on the well pad itself, but by trucks and other vehicles, backup beepers, and any other machinery. The noise studies presented failed to show total noise. Residents are concerned with total noise generated, especially unrelenting and cumulative noise from all sources. The effects of constant noise on public health and well-being are many, all of them negative.
Is it four or five?
Five, five, sorry.
Right, so we're just, we're gonna do four, which would be the video, so this would be five.
Officials.
Hold on. I have an objection to this line of questioning, as you might not be surprised here, it's very raw. This is, appears to be some kind of news article, number one, so it's unclear whether the offer even is, so it is hearsay, but more importantly, if the subject matter deals with alleged earthquakes, again, this is not something within the purview of this board, and there's no foundation in it, that that is a risk in West Deer Township or Dionysus well pad.
So Ms. Austin, yeah, I, again, trying to stay consistent.
Okay.
To the extent that we're expressing concern generally about the industry itself, I think it's, you know, in addition to the fact that, you know, there's no source, you don't have any personal knowledge of this, you know, I'd be inclined to sustain the objection. Do you have a response?
Yes, the Planning Commission meeting addressed earthquakes.
Unfortunately, that's not sufficient. What you're talking about is a concern about the, Mr. Restonetti, you know, I do wanna be, I don't wanna get you in trouble, you know, as far as representing a different party objector, so I, you know, we need to keep that distinction. So Ms. Austin, I am gonna exclude this from evidence, just because, again, not, and to be clear, and I can stress this enough, not that I disagree with you, not that I don't believe that it's true, it's just something that if, in fact, this activity is more likely to cause an earthquake, or if it's not, it's not something this board can base its decision on. So certainly understand the concern, but just not relevant to this proceeding.
Okay, the DEP report showed that Pennsylvania had their first fracking-related earthquake.
Same objection.
And it's still sustained. You need to move on to your next one.
Okay. I stated at our first public meeting that prior to the proposed wells in West Deer, I had never before considered packing a bug-out bag. It just wasn't in my wheelhouse. Sadly, that has changed. I never before considered purchasing a rider on my homeowner's policy for earthquake insurance. This insurance carries a hefty deductible of 10% to 20% of the coverage limit.
Same objection.
Yeah, I think we'll give a little bit of leeway here, because she's expressing her concerns specific to this site regarding health, safety, and welfare issues, but, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta be limited to that scope, Ms. Austin.
Okay. I purchased my home in West Deer in 1980 with a normal expectation that my investment Studies helped by Penn State indicate that property values within three-quarters of a mile of shale gas extraction sites lose from 22.9 to 25.5 of a decline in price.
I'm gonna object to this line of questioning on the basis that there's been no foundation laid, the study, the offer to the study, there's no opportunity on our behalf to cross-examine anybody with the DEP's reported finding.
So Ms. Austin, you know, it is hearsay submitting, you know, a study like this, and we do have some latitude when it comes to hearsay, but, you know, again, property values is not something that comes from the ordinance, it's not something that if the board would say, "We hereby deny the application based on a concern for people's property values," I think Olympus would probably be thrilled with that, because they know they'd have a very good chance to win in court if that was our basis. So, again, I know this is difficult, especially for folks who aren't, you know, don't do this for a living, so I really wanna work with folks, but at the same time, I do need to take a consistent position regarding relevant information. So we'll sustain the objection to this report.
Okay. Okay. Not considering this report, I have concerns that having a fracking well near my house would result in a decline in my property value, and therefore a decline in my welfare and other residents' welfare. A property's value is determined by what someone is willing to pay for it, and no one wants, if no one wants to live in areas with fracking, then property values in those areas will plummet. That could also result in a decline in township and school revenue from real estate-based I invested my life and earnings with a reasonable expectation of being in a rural residential area. I have a reasonable expectation that time spent relaxing outdoors will not be impeded by excessive dust, fumes, pollutants, and industrial noise. I didn't choose to invest and live in an urban area because I didn't want the noise and traffic. The wells would be a nuisance and interfere with the peaceful use and enjoyment of my Our area has a large population of senior citizens. I speak also for many of our older residents, many of whom are not on the internet, that aren't even aware of these proposed projects and can't access the West Deer website. The lack of daily newspapers, a media they grew up with, places them at a disadvantage. Our local news isn't broadcast via TV or radio. I speak for those who have families, jobs, responsibilities, and physical impairments, or lack the endurance that prevents them from attending hours and hours of meetings. I speak for the older citizens who are unable to safely drive at night to attend these meetings. You represent them all. I've presented my concerns. I hope that they're your concerns. I want the best for our township. You have a huge responsibility, but that includes the responsibility to follow the ordinances. The Olympus plan provides incomplete information and also fails to comply. The PA municipal code requires you to ask, "Does this meet the standards to promote public health, safety, and welfare?" The West Deer Township website bears a prominent banner stating, "Welcome to West Deer Township, an amazing place to live, work, and play." Approval of these wells will not make our township a better place to live, work, or play. I respectfully request that the board deny the application in order to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Mr. Lucas, any cross-examination?
Just one question, Ms. Austin. If we could go back to, I think it was about the first page of your presentation, your power point.
The emergency response plan?
Yeah. Now, you point out, or make the contention, that Olympus's emergency response plan was deficient because it did not identify residents within one-half mile and one-mile radius. Is that your position?
Yes, there's no list of residents.
Are you aware that DEP regulations do not require that individual residences within a certain distance of a well pad be identified in the emergency response plan?
This is in writing, this is what you put down as your plan.
No, I'm asking you, are you aware that, do you know what the DEP requirements are with respect to what information has to be provided?
I'm not an expert on DEP, obviously.
So you don't know?
I know that I read that this is what information you said would be provided in the response plan, and it's not there.
No, my question for you, are you aware that DEP regulations do not require that individual residences be identified in a certain radius of a well pad?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Because you just don't know what the DEP regulations, the guidelines are with respect to emergency response plans.
No, I never referred to the DEP guidelines when I was citing this.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Austin, any more testimony or evidence you want to submit?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, we can have the next person come on down and start getting set up. If you need to get set up, or just come on up to the microphone, state your name, spell your last name, and proceed with your case. Come on, don't be shy. All right, folks, so I know we have a number of party objectors, I'm guessing there are more folks who want to speak, and just to kind of play this out again, to remind everyone that if you're a party objector...
Nope. I have nothing.
Oh, yeah, hold on, hold on one second, we'll get right to you. If you're a party objector and you want to provide comments on this application, the time to provide comments is tonight, because when the public comment portion begins, that is only for residents and taxpayers who are not party objectors. So we'll give some folks time to think about if they want to, I'm not telling you have to provide testimony or evidence, or whatever you want to do, but this is your opportunity to proceed with your comments. Proceed with your comments.
I don't need to state mine. Mary Yates, 4413 Skyview Terrace, 715044. So I don't have anything prepared, I don't know what to say, I'm afraid if I speak my opinion or my feelings, I will get objected to. So I'm just going to speak my feelings, if you have an objection, whatever.
Right, and just to be clear, I mean, you are permitted to speak your feelings and your, you know, this is your opportunity.
But I'm not an expert, so...
That's okay, you're not giving expert opinions, you're giving your opinion. Where it got tricky, and I understand that the rules of evidence are complicated, but things like relevance and hearsay don't generally come into play whenever you're just speaking your opinion and your feelings and your observations.
And I think this is probably the first time for a lot of us here that we've never been through this, we're not attorneys, we're not lawyers.
Totally understand, and that's why I really...
Never been to court.
I want to try to be helpful and try to, you know, kind of be open for people, so please provide whatever testimony, and if you go astray, again, Mr. Lucas, I'm sure we'll be paying attention, and I'll try to keep you on track as well.
Okay. So I want to start off by saying that I was born in East Liberty, I lived in Highland Park until I was 14, moved to Italy for a year, came back, lived in Morningside. So all those places are, I would say, rural. Or, urban, see? Okay, urban. Anyways, so I've been around the noise, I've been around the people screaming, I've been around smog, things like that. I mean, you might not think it is like that down there, but it was a hustling and busting area. It's, still is now. Moved to Shaler, graduated from Shaler, bought a house in Etna, and we lived there for a while, and I just, when I had my son, decided I didn't want to raise him in Etna, not that it's a bad area, but I just wanted a little bit more property for him, and things like that. So we picked West Deer, we picked a dead-end street that's safe for children, we picked a nice little plant up on a hill. I live close to 910, but it's, I don't hear any noise from 910 where I live. I have two other kids that I have, all three of them have gone to Deer Lake School, no problems with the school, love the school district, love West Deer. My concern is that the location, I am not against fracking at all. I believe in fracking, honestly, I do, but I just feel like, why is it being considered to be put near thousands of homes with thousands of residents who have no option, they cannot just pick up and move because they don't want to take a risk? I mean, you can't, there's, there's a risk in everything, so you can't say there's no risk in it, there's a risk in everything. So instead of picking a location so close to so many residents, West Deer is full of farmland, full of property, acres and acres, that you can approach somebody, it's an older community, there's people that are older and don't want to take care of that property any longer. Why not approach them, to where you frack there, you're not bothering anybody's water, you're not bothering anybody with the pollution, it's the noise, and you get what you want, we get what we want, and then if they propose to build a housing plan there, close to it, later on, that's fine. Those people will be aware that there is a fracking pad there already, they make the decision whether they want to live near it or not. We should not have to think about selling our homes really quick and buying somewhere else just to get away from it, just because we don't, we think it's too close to home, and it definitely is too close to home. So my reasoning is, put it somewhere, you have the property to do it, you won't be bothering anybody, it would be so much cheaper for you not to fight people, to put it somewhere where you won't have people arguing with you, than let them build houses in the future, and then if people want to move there, they know it's already, they know that it's fracked, if they're, hey, you know, we're all for fracking, I'm for fracking too, but I don't want to live near it, I don't want it near my home. That's it, that's why I want it considered, location.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
This is Neil Crowley, C-R-O-W-L-E-Y. I live on 4032 Crestwood Drive in Sonya PA 15044. I just have some opening remarks before I get into some more detailed things. So I bought my own here in West Deer on Crestwood Drive in December of 2020. Looked about me, I graduated in 2010 with a Bachelor of Science in Engineering in Mechanical Engineering in Case Western Reserve University. Since 2010, I've worked at a nearby manufacturing facility and office that has around 750 onsite employees, and for the last eight years there, I've worked as the factory master scheduler, which is a very data-analysis-heavy role. On my way to and from work, which would be about 500 times a year, I drive through all three of the intersection studies and the traffic studies, as well as the intersection that was not studied at McIntyre and 910. So when I heard about this site, I spent a pretty considerable amount of time reading about the pros and cons of this type of activity, unconventional oil and gas activity. On the one hand, I've read about jobs being created, tax revenues going toward much-needed county projects, the fact that the U.S. is now a net exporter of natural gas, which is important during a year where gas prices in other countries are starting to skyrocket due to insufficient global supply. So it's clear to me, at least right now, the world is dependent on this resource, and these sites need to go somewhere. On the other hand, I also read multiple, what I would characterize as unbelievably horrible firsthand accounts from families about what happened to them when deep well sites were constructed near their homes. And I also read multiple credible and convincing reports and studies that documented those harms. So I personally came to the conclusion that who the operator is and what the record is is extremely important to evaluate what the impact of this site could be for me and my new community here in West Deer. And my last comment, so in my job, I work with Microsoft Excel on a daily basis, and I regularly create reports and perform analysis on a variety of different types of data from different sources. So I decided to use the skills that I've developed over the last decade as a professional to explore the available data on Olympus Energy's record and to create some reports from that data, because I wanted to better understand, you know, as I've said, I think who the operator is is important, and I wanted to understand more about this operator. So I'm going to proceed into a presentation that I've put together, or at least I'll attempt to. Okay, I'm going to move into a presentation here, and I will be submitting this presentation to the record, so let me go ahead and hand out copies. This would be Crowley Exhibit Number Four. Okay, so I'll try to skip through some of this if it overlaps with what anyone else has done. Oh, I see. Yeah, got you. Okay, so just a little bit of information about this before I proceed. So most of the work that I did here was looking at publicly available data from the Pennsylvania DEP for three different reports that they provide. And one is the unconventional oil and gas well inventory report, second is the DEP oil and gas compliance report, and the third is the DEP oil and gas waste report. And generally speaking, the methodology is the same for all of these. I downloaded the data and selected the entire data table, and then used a tool in Microsoft Excel that's called a pivot table. This tool has been around since 1995, so about 26 years. According to Microsoft, pivot table is one of the most widely-used tools in the world for creating reports and for doing data analysis. So that was sort of my methodology for all of my reports. So moving on to slide number two of Exhibit Four, this is a report that, again, is a pivot table from the DEP's oil and gas waste report, and specifically Olympus Energy. So the DEP provides this information in two forms, they document liquid waste that's disposed of, and so that's what we're looking at here. I did convert, they reported in gallons, or, sorry, in barrels, and I did convert it to gallons, so one barrel is 42 gallons. Not a lot to talk about here, just two items. One, I know it was discussed that, you know, Olympus Energy does not implant on using surface impoundments to store any waste. I'll note that previously they've stored about a little over 4 million gallons of the 27.6, approximately a million gallons of waste that they've produced since 2018, so hopefully that will be the case here, that these, that this waste will not be stored in any surface impoundments, I've read that there can be some issues with those. And then the only other comment on this page is, you know, just, I believe Mr. Johnson in his testimony mentioned that a truck was overturned in Elizabeth Township, so again, just the general concern of this large volume of waste being produced, and, you know, hopefully we won't have something like that happen in our community. I'm just going to move this projector forward a bit. Okay, moving on to page three. As I mentioned, the other element of the oil and gas waste report from the DEP reports, not all of it's solid waste, but it's more waste that's disposed of at landfills, and that's measured in pounds, that's typically how landfills measure waste when they're charging for it. And the only thing that I noted here that caught my attention was that of the 78 million pounds of waste that Olympus Energy generated, oh, I should mention also, this report was for the time period between January 2018 and August 18th, 2021. And what caught my attention was that there are 1,287,000 pounds of waste that Olympus has had to dispose of, and the category of waste is soil contaminated by oil and gas-related spills. So I believe this waste is related to what was going on at the Apollo B site, which Mr. Tisa testified to. So again, just a similar concern, obviously, if a application like this is approved, the production of the waste is an approved use, but the fact that there's been over a million pounds of waste that Olympus Energy has had to dispose of because soil was contaminated by a spill is, again, something as a citizen that I find to be a little concerning. And so again, hopefully if this application was approved, we wouldn't have something like this happen in our township either. Moving on to page four, again, this is from the DEP oil and gas waste report, this is actually the same view of the information, it's just a more detailed view of the same data. Again, this was created using pivot table in Excel that points to the entire data table. And in this case, it just shows some more details about the different places that this 78 million pounds of waste was disposed of, and in this case, it was disposed of in 12 different cities, and including actually about 17 million pounds, so it was trucked all the way, or I assume trucked, I don't know what method it was transported, but was disposed of in Ohio, actually. So that's all I really have to talk about from the oil and gas waste report. Actually, before I move on, I'm going to get a drink, but also, the next report that I'm going to go over is a series of reports with data from the oil and gas compliance report. Now, this report essentially, again, from the DEP website, you can download this data in an Excel spreadsheet, and this report includes a variety of information that is reported by DEP inspectors and entered into their database that reports the results of their inspections, and also reports any code violations, PA code violations, that those inspectors found. So moving on to page five of my presentation, this is a summary, again, from data from the oil and gas compliance report, and now I'll note the time period for this report and any of the other oil and gas compliance reports I'm reporting was January 1st, 2018 through August 23rd, 2021. So my data is a little bit newer than some of the information that Mr. Tisa presented, so this would include several more months of data, I believe, than what he said, so the number of violations is a little bit higher. But the DEP inspection records show that there were 414 code violations that occurred during this time period. I should also mention that anytime a violation is noted, according to the DEP's data dictionary, where they provide information about what is located, or about the different parameters of information that they provide in their reports, there's a violation ID number that's created, a unique identifier for each violation. So that's how you know how many violations there were, each time a violation is accounted for and entered into the DEP database, and then it's assigned a unique identifier, a violation ID number. So that's how you're able to count how many there have been. So in this case, what this, what this graph is showing is, so there's some blue bars that go to the right, and those blue bars show how many violations were noted in DEP inspections, and for each well site, or actually site ID. So we can see the names of the site IDs are on the left. And the other information that this, that I've sort of layered on top of this graph is the amount of fines that have been assessed and paid by Olympus Energy. So so far, again, $307,750 of fines, and we can see, I've sort of laid out how, which sites those were assigned to, $45,000 for the Zeus well pad, $13,000 at the Midas well pad, $175,000 in fines at the Plutus well pad, and the $74,750 is actually for the combination of fines at the Plutus to Apollo B pipeline, as well as the Apollo B to Dominion pipeline. So that's a combination there of the issues at those two sites. So it's cut off, but for this, for this report I've prepared, this is actually just a portion of the report that I've prepared, and so I've also just printed out the report more in full, which I'm going to call Crowley Exhibit Five. It's pretty similar information, but just for the sake of sort of including the pivot table where the data for this graph comes from. Again, the pivot table methodology is it points to the oil and gas compliance report, and it includes all of the information in that report, and it allows you to, you know, just look at the information in various different ways, sort, subtotal format, and otherwise make the information easier to understand. So that's, that printout of this report, which just basically includes this graph, as well as the pivot table that the data comes from, is included here in Crowley Exhibit Five. Moving on here to page six of the presentation. So this is just a category of violations that I noticed that, this is something that I was a little bit alarmed about. So this is violations specifically for codes that reference discharges to waters of the Commonwealth, and it looks like they're mostly governed under CSL. So let me just explain what we're looking at here. So the data table on the top is, again, from the pivot table, that just shows the number of these types of violations for each well site, and you can see that there's 60 total noted by the DEP. The table below it, again, is the more detailed pivot table, and in this case, I wanted to just include, include a little bit more detail... just include, include a little bit more detail with regard to having a clearer, I don't know the term, paper trail, if you will, to show exactly where this information's coming from, if someone wanted to verify independently. So this table below, this summary table at the top includes, with the dark gray background, the name of the site, with the light gray background, it includes the date of the DEP inspection, and then the text with the light yellow background includes the specific Pennsylvania state codes or laws that the DEP inspector found that were in violation of, Olympus Energy was in violation of. And to the right of that yellow text is the DEP inspection ID and the DEP violation ID. I've explained how the violation IDs work, and the inspection ID is similar. When the DEP inspector enters information into their database, it generates a unique inspection ID that documents all of the different information tied to that inspection that occurred on that date. So again, just for sake of completeness, since I can't show the whole report on this presentation, I've prepared a printout of this report more in full, which I'm going to call Exhibit Six, Crowley Exhibit Six. And so one benefit of that printout is it just kind of lets you see, you can do the count yourself about violations, and you can kind of see the, a little bit more detail about the violation code that was noted by the inspector. And I'll just also note CSL, if you see CSL before violation code, that stands for Clean Screens Law, and then typically the ones with the numbers are violations from Pennsylvania Code Title Twenty-Five Environmental Protection, and the number at the front designates what chapter from that code the violation refers to. And again, this information goes from the DEP oil and gas compliance report, just as the last several slides have been. Moving on to page seven of Crowley Exhibit Four. This is a little bit different view. Again, it's a pivot table that points to the entire data set. What this is showing is, so the DEP provides in their data, a violation date, which is the date that the DEP inspector noted violation, and then they also include a parameter called resolved date, which is the date that in the DEP records, the DEP noted that the violation was resolved. Okay, so you can use those two dates to perform a simple calculation, the number of days between those two, between the initial violation date and the resolved date, and that allows you to see how many days for violations that have been resolved, how many days it took, at least according to the DEP records, for that violation to be resolved. So what this report shows is just the average number of days for each well site or each site, for how many days it took for those violations to be resolved. Some are lower, some are higher. Also note, out of the four-hundred-and-fourteen violations, only two-hundred-and-thirty-six of them, as of August 23rd, 2021, which again was when this data was pulled, only two-hundred-and-thirty-six out of four-hundred-and-fourteen had any information included under resolved date or any of the other parameters, which include more information when a violation has been resolved. So this is only for the two-hundred-and-thirty-six that were resolved that this average applies to. I'll also note that the average of one-hundred-and-forty-three days overall that's shown here is not, it's not the average of each site. You'd be taking an average of an average, which you don't want to do. It's actually the average of each individual violation calculated overall as list. And again, to just provide a little bit more information, to sort of show the full level of detail required to see that this summary level report is reporting accurately the information that the DEP provides in their public access record for oil and gas compliance reports, I've prepared, again, a more detailed exhibit to show the detailed level of this summary slide, since I can't fit the full report on this presentation, and I'm calling that Crowley Exhibit Seven. Just going to note here on page eight of Crowley Exhibit Four, some wording that comes from Olympus Energy Exhibit A, Tab Eight, Page Seventy-One, which is page seven of their project narrative from the ESCGP III document. And I'll just note that the commitment that Olympus Energy is making with regard to any problems with erosion and sedimentation systems, control measures is, well, I've highlighted the wording here, I'm not going to read all of it, but it uses words such as, "Any required repairs or maintenance shall be made immediately. Damaged, blocked, or otherwise compromised measures observed during the inspection shall be repaired immediately." And damaged barriers shall be, in Section Three, damaged barriers shall be repaired in accordance with the manufacturer recommendations or replaced within twenty-four hours of inspection. Erosion and undercutting of sediment barriers shall be promptly repaired." So just an observation, I don't know what the legal definition of immediately is, or what can the DEP considers immediately, but based on what I'm seeing in the data, an average of one-hundred-and-forty-three days to resolve a violation doesn't sound like immediately to me. Moving on to page nine of Crowley Exhibit Four. This again is data from a pivot table that points to the DEP oil and gas compliance report for Olympus Energy, and it's the same time period, 2018 through August 23rd, 2021. And again, this report just shows the number of unresolved violations, which as we mentioned, I believe it was two-hundred-and-thirty-six have been resolved, so this is the balance of the violations that according to the DEP record are not resolved. And again, you can, you can tell this because there's no information put in the parameters on the report, such as the resolution date, or the resolved date is what the parameters call. So this graph, this is just a graph that shows the information from the pivot table above, and it just shows the number of violation at different sites. There's, what, six different sites here that still have unresolved violations, at least as of August 23rd, 2021. It is possible some of them may have been resolved since then. I didn't look at that. Okay, so the next thing that I wanted to look at, I felt that had sort of explored Olympus Energy's record, the next thing that I was curious about is how does that record compare to other oil and gas companies in the industry in Pennsylvania? You know, I understand this is complicated activity, there's a lot going on, as they testified to, and what their site plan is and everything that would have to happen here. So I was curious, is this typical, a typical number of violations for an operator, or is this more than usual? So the next report that we're going to look at pulls information from two different DEP reports. So moving on to page ten here of Crowley Exhibit Four, this is going to take a little bit of explanation. So this is a combination of a pivot table, and it's also pulling some information in from, from the oil and gas well inventory report, which again is a publicly available DEP report. So I'm just going to walk through what is being shown on this report. The first column on the left titled Operator has a list of operators, and I've chosen twenty operators plus Olympus Energy. So first I should explain why I chose those twenty operators. And to do that, I'm actually going to refer to the, to the column, that's two columns over, titled Number of Unconventional Wells Drilled. That information comes from the DEP oil and gas well inventory report, and they provide, first, you can choose to only look at unconventional well sites. So of course, that's what I chose, because you want an apples-to-apples comparison. So then, once you select unconventional well sites only, that you can then look at the spud date in that report, which is the date that the operator reports to the DEP that they've commenced drilling, and that's how you know how many drill, well, wells have been drilled. And additionally, there's some other information provided in that report as to, you know, what the status of the well is, and so you can use that other information just to double check to make sure, you know, because there is a field, for example, called Operator Reported Never Drilled. And so in this case, when I looked at this information based on spud dates, you could tell that this was only wells that had been drilled, it wasn't including any information from any of those other categories. Now, so looking at the number of unconventional wells drilled, the reason I selected this list of twenty other operators is I sorted from most wells drilled to least wells drilled for the entire state of Pennsylvania, and again, this is unconventional wells only. And I selected the top twenty operators in terms of the number of unconventional wells that they had drilled. Now the top twenty operators have drilled eleven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three wells as of the date that I pulled this information, unconventional wells, and that represents ninety-point-two percent of the total unconventional wells that have been drilled in the state of Pennsylvania. So I felt that this was a very representative data set that included almost all of the wells drilled by the top operators in the state, and as measured by number of wells drilled. And then again, that information is shown in the column that says Number of Unconventional Wells Drilled. Okay. So to the left of that is something that says, is a column, the second column to the right, is a column that says Distinct Count of Violation ID. You'll note it says for well sites only excludes pipelines. I'll explain that in a moment. But this is information, again, from the oil and gas compliance report that we've talked about in the last several slides, that again is reported information, and you know, as I've explained, the distinct number of violations is a known quantity, because each violation is assigned a unique violation ID number, and there's a function in Excel called Distinct Count that allows you to only count a unique number one time, so that's how you can ensure it's an accurate count. And I actually created two versions of this report. I've decided this version is the one that I would show here. It actually makes, it actually looks a little better for Olympus Energy, this version, than the other version. But since this conditional use application is only with regard to a deep well site, and as we've established, doesn't include additional pipelines, I thought, again, to try to get the most accurate and most objective apples-to-apples comparison, it made sense to exclude any site IDs that the DEP, you know, any site IDs that are pipeline-only, that don't include an unconventional well site, from the number of violations that are being reported here. So again, I can get, I don't want to get too much into the technical details, I can explain exactly how a person would do that, but in a nutshell, the DEP assigns a site ID to each permit, they, you know, it's a unique identifier for each site, and they also have a designator called unconventional, and if it's a pipeline site that doesn't have a deep well site, the designator is unconventional equals no. If, but if that site ID on the oil and gas well inventory report includes a unconventional well site, then they designate unconventional yes, and so you can use that to pull out any of the pipeline-only sites and limit the number of reported violations on this report to only include, again, site IDs that the DEP has designated unconventional equals yes. So that's how you can kind of limit this to only be the deep well sites. Okay, so moving on now, a lot of explanation, I apologize, I know that's very technical detail there, but using that information now from the oil and gas compliance report and the well inventory report, you can then calculate the fourth column over that says un-averaged number of DEP violations per unconventional well drilled. And again, this is for deep well site IDs only excluding pipelines, and you can see that that number is six-point-four violations per well drilled for Olympus Energy, and then some simple calculations. The average for other operators is point zero-nine, or sorry, zero-point-nine, and six-point-four is seven-hundred-and-thirty-five percent higher than the average for the top twenty operators in PA, and again, that, these top twenty operators represent ninety percent of all the unconventional wells that have been drilled. And then I also noted that the next highest operator on this list has, it looks like that XTO, or sorry, that's Chief Oil and Gas at two-point-two violations per well drilled. And I've noted that Olympus Energy's number is two-hundred-and-ninety-six percent, so almost three times higher than the next highest operator on this list. And again, this is measuring the average number of DEP violations per unconventional well drilled for deep well sites only excluding pipelines. So I felt this was as close as I could get to, to the application that's under consideration for the board here. So then I was curious, because, you know, number of violations is one thing, but I was curious also, what about fines? So I'm going to not explain this to the level of detail, but we're moving on here to page eleven. This is basically the same information, or similar information with a similar methodology, again, from the oil and gas compliance report and from the oil and gas well inventory report from the DEP, except instead of reporting the number of violations per, in total, in the second column, the total number of violations for deep well sites only excluding pipelines, in this case, I only reported the, or I reported the total number of fine, or the total dollar value of fines assessed by the DEP to these companies, again, for deep well sites, not excluding pipelines. And we can see here, again, that Olympus Energy is coming out at around seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars worth of fines per well drilled, which is five-hundred-and-forty-eight percent, or about five-and-a-half times higher than the average fines per well drilled for the other top twenty Pennsylvania operators for unconventional well sites. And again, I note that Olympus Energy's number of seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars is about one-hundred-and-sixty-three percent higher than the next higher, highest operator, which appears to be Rice Drilling LLC, they have four-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars of fines per well drilled. So that concludes the exploration of Olympus Energy's record with regard to unconventional oil and gas activities and how their record compares to the other top twenty operators in the state of Pennsylvania, who drove ninety-point-two percent of all the unconventional wells. So that's the end of that, that presentation. I do think it's appropriate at this time, and Mr. Robb, you'll of course weigh in on this, and as will Mr. Lucas, there is a legal matter, I'm just concerned, Mr. Lucas hasn't made any objections yet, although he may. I think there is a legal precedent that establishes what type of information is relevant, specifically with regard to public hearings for conditional use applications for unconventional well pads, that was handed down by the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court on May 2031st, 2019, and I would just like to submit this into evidence, just as a general matter. And so I'm going to go ahead and put this on the screen. I suppose this would be, I think Crowley Exhibit Eight, I guess this would be, unless there's an objection, so we'll see about that when I hand this out. And I'm having trouble with mine.
Certainly, Mr. Crowley is capable of making whatever legal argument he wants, but if he's citing a particular case, that's, he can certainly submit that to the board, but it's not factual evidence, so I think it should be larger than exhibit.
I would agree with that, Mr. Lucas, we certainly can take it under consideration.
Sure.
But it will not be examined.
Okay, fair enough.
Do you have extra copies to pass around?
I do, yes. So let's go ahead and do that. Okay, I just have three copies in this case, Mr. Robb, one for you, one for the record, which is not going to go in, as you've established, and one for closing counsel.
I'm guessing the stewardesses will make me read it anyway, so I didn't really need one copy. Is that right?
Thank you for mentioning this one already, Mr. Lucas. Okay, so we're not going to go through all the details here, but this was a ruling, again, that was handed down by the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court on May 31/2019. The ruling was written, the opinion was written by Justice Todd. And the first page of the document, I highlighted just some, I guess you can't see this. Okay. So the first page is, just to establish sort of what the context of this case was, which was they were, I'll just read this quote and then go on. There's just one other page I want to read a quote from, and then we'll move on from this. But Justice Todd writes, quote, "In this appeal, we consider the question of whether a municipality in addressing a natural gas extraction company's conditional use application for the construction and operation of a well site may consider as evidence the testimony of residents of another municipality regarding the impacts to their health, quality of life, and property, which they attribute to a similar facility constructed and operated by the same company and their municipality. After careful review, we hold that such evidence may be received and considered by a municipality in deciding whether to approve a conditional use application." And then the justice continues on. So that's, I think, enough to establish the context of this ruling.
Mr. Crowley, if I could, I mean, this would be a great response had Mr. Lucas objected to everything that you just presented as testimony, but he didn't. So I mean, you don't really need to establish the relevance because there's no one who objected to it.
Understood. That being said, can I just cover one more page, two more paragraphs? I think it may be...
Is it page 26?
It is.
All right, why don't you jump to it?
Okay. And on page 26 of this document, I should say this was, I probably should have said what case this is, since it's not being allowed into the record. I'll cover that at the end. But, so on page 26, Justice Todd continues, quote, "As a general matter, our court has recognized the relevancy and probative value of an applicant's past conduct in determining whether he meets the conditions of licensure for conducting future business activities of the same nature as those in which he had previously engaged." End quote. Justice Todd then provides some legal precedent, some examples from legal precedent, before continuing, quote, "Of greatest pertinence to the issue we are considering, in the context of a hearing on an application for a conditional use approval, our court has regarded evidence relating to past conduct, past conduct and practices of a facility's owners and specific impacts on the community from the functioning of the facility to be relevant and probative in determining whether, if conditional use authorization were granted, the facility's operation would pose a threat to the welfare of the community." End quote. And we can move on from there.
Okay. Thanks. And just, this gives me an opportunity, I think, to address an issue, and I'm not sure if it'll come up again or not, but it's a procedural matter as well as sort of a legal matter. So when you're providing testimony and evidence at this stage of the proceedings, what you're presenting is essentially, you know, facts, testimony, documentation, and support of your position. When the hearing concludes, after we, you know, finish up the party objectors, after we finish up all the public comment, and close the hearing ultimately, whether the rebuttal or not is still to be determined, what we'll do is request, and I might have mentioned this already, but we will request what's called proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. And this type of argument is exactly the type of legal argument that you may want to include to support your findings and your conclusions of law. So what that looks like, and we'll go over it again, I'm sure, when this hearing finishes up, but generally, it is what, what the various party objectors, if you want to submit it, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to. And I expect the advocate will submit their own proposed findings. But it's essentially, you know, reviewing the record, testimony, and evidence that's been submitted by numbered paragraph saying, you know, suggesting what you believe the board should find as fact, and then essentially applying those facts to the relevant standards by way of example. And again, that's why you gave me a good opportunity to talk about it, would be, you know, this to say, if your argument is because of Olympus' past history of more violations than your standard, you know, operator, that should be something the board considers, and here's this, here's this case citation, and here's why, you know, you should conclude that there, again, you should turn down the application. So, you know, generally, we try to avoid legal argument at this stage of the proceedings, but it, you know, it does give an opportunity to kind of provide that explanation. So I appreciate that, and you said you were going to move on, so I will allow you to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robb. And obviously, I'm not qualified to present any legal opinions about anything, but I thought Supreme Court Justice Todd might be, so I thought I'd read her words for us here.
Yes, and again, at the appropriate time, at the appropriate place, that's absolutely appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And let me think, that might actually be everything I had. I had some other stuff I could get into. Let me just, let me just check here. Necessarily, I'm just going to go ahead and submit into the record also, I'll do this electronically, I apologize, I don't have a document for this, but this is a document from the P A D E P that they call their data dictionary, and it just provides some additional information about what the different parameters in the report mean. So this is just information that I'd like to provide to show sort of what my reference point was for helping to determine what the information in the reports meant, so that I could do my absolute best to make sure I was providing accurate and, yeah, accurate information.
Will we be marking that to the page?
I believe because the Supreme Court case was not admitted into evidence, then that would be the case, Mr. Lucas, inexcipit. Thank you. So I'll submit this electronically. And I believe that's all I have. Well, all I have, but I'm sure I'm not done.
You're close to the meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
One question, actually. With respect to Exhibits 4, 5, 6, and 7, the, any of the charts and spreadsheets that are contained in those documents?
Yes.
Those aren't original source DEP documents. Those are ones you pulled and prepared based on data you say you got from the DEP's website.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucas. Mr. Crowley, you are, unless there is any, I apologize, I have not been extending the offer, but just as a general rule, if any party objectors, do you have questions for a witness? You are able to ask those. It's, again, unusual in this circumstance that you would, but seeing, running to the microphone, Mr. Crowley, you are released from duty.
Can I ask a quick question, actually?
Okay, give it a second, then fire back up. There you go.
Okay. So just a question. So I did, I apologize, and Mr. Lucas may have more cross. I did have another presentation. I'm not going to go through it. I started to document my sources of information and methodology, which is, a question reminded me of, thank you for that. And so I'll just go ahead and submit that into the record as well. We'll call that Crowley Exhibit 9. We can go through it now as well.
I mean, if you want to just generally describe, but I'm going to suspect that Mr. Lucas is not going to have objections to it. If it is what you say, it is just a basis for what your calculations were, but can you either show it to us or give us a further explanation?
Sure, sure. So I was hoping to have another week to prepare this in more detail, but if I can... Okay. So I did start putting together a presentation. I was hoping to document every single report and exactly how I created every single one. Didn't quite get there for today's meeting, but just, I'm just going to very quickly step through this, and I'm not going to cover, it's not going to take long. Okay, so this, we'll call Sources of Information, Crowley, I guess, what did we say, Exhibit 9, this would be Sources of Information and Methodology. The, that was Slide 1. Slide 2 just shows where on the DEP website I went to access reports. I've circled the button that I clicked, says Reports. Slide 3 shows where your person can access the Oil and Gas Reports. Again, I've circled that section, which is the next page you get to once you click the Report button on the DEP. Slide 4 shows, on the next page of Oil and Gas Reports, you can see the Oil and Gas Compliance Report, and you can also see the Oil and Gas Well Operator Inventory. Okay, so that's where I went to get that information. Slide 5 shows the screen specifically for the Oil and Gas Compliance Report, and it shows how this is an interactive report, where the user can enter a date range, they can choose an operator, they can choose some other information, and then export the report. And the way interactive reports work is you fill out the information and the parameters, and when you hit Export Report, it sends a query to the database to retrieve that data specific to the timeframe and operators that you've chosen. And so that is sort of the, except where I got my Oil and Gas Compliance information. The next page, which is Slide 6, just shows why you don't, and I think this kind of answers Mr. Lucas's question maybe a little better. This is why you don't show the source data, because the source data for the Oil and Gas Compliance Report has 35 different columns of data. There's no formatting. It's basically impossible to read as is. You have to do some additional, use some additional tools. And this is one of the reasons why I used the Pivot Table tool, which, as I've mentioned, has been around for about 26 years and is very widely used, because anyone who's in data analysis isn't ever going to be looking at the source data, except to make sure that they've studied it sufficiently to understand exactly what type of information it is and what it means. And then, once you understand the data, you move on to actually using some tool like a Pivot Table, which is a well-established tool, to actually view and create reports that pull information directly from the table. So that was my methodology, as I mentioned, for every report that I created. And as I also mentioned, the only actual column that I added, if you look all the way at the bottom right of the screen, Column AJ, is a calculated column, which, as I've mentioned, is calculate the number of days that violations took to resolve. And you can do that by calculating the difference in number of days from Column T, which is the parameter called Violation Date, and, let's see, I don't remember if I don't see the column on here, because I think it's cut off on the end there, but then there's also a column parameter called Resolved Date. And so that's how, that was my methodology for calculating the number of days to resolve Slide 7 just shows you, again, can get the Oil and Gas Inspection Report, I think I covered that. So, yeah, you can actually independently corroborate some of the reports I've created by going to this page on the DEP website for Oil and Gas Reports and using the Oil and Gas Inspection Reports Viewer, which is, and Page 8 of the presentation shows, this, it does have the DEP stamp on it, so it's a little more official-looking. And this document, which I suppose I should also submit into the record, that would be a good thing to do, this document here actually includes, for example, the unique inspection ID, the inspection date, which is some of the information I tried to always include, either the inspection ID or violation ID, and dates as much as I could in my reports, so that that information could be independently corroborated and verified by a second party. So actually, I'll go ahead and submit this report into the record to, let's see, this is called the Oil and Gas Inspection Report. And the parameters I used were the date range, January 1st, 2018, through August 23rd, 2021. I selected the operator Olympus Energy. So I can go ahead and submit that report only electronically. I didn't print this one out either into the record as well, just as some additional corroboration to verify where my information came from. Page 9, again, shows when you're downloading the Oil and Gas Inventory, what parameters you select. And in this case, I was looking at all operators because I wanted to compare Olympus Energy to all other operators in the state of Pennsylvania. So again, you just select, and I selected, I should say, all operators, and I selected Well Configuration Unconventional, downloaded that data set. And, let's see, I think we covered this. Oh, sorry. We don't need to see this. I also calculated how many swimming pools you could have filled with Olympus Energy's waste. It's 2,132. But I didn't think that was relevant, so I didn't bring it up. So you just did. Feel free to regret.
I would just ask, I think, that was Exhibit 9 and 10, if he could provide an electronic copy?
Yes.
To the township by tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Okay. Upon receipt, we'll make that available as we have been making these exhibits available as quickly as we can.
Okay. Mr. Lucas, I suspect your note-taking might be better than mine. So I said my Exhibit 9 was this presentation?
Yes.
And then, I guess Exhibit 10 would have been then that?
Inspection.
Yeah, the Oil and Gas Reports Viewer, the Inspection Report. Okay.
You're giving too much credit.
You're pretty sharp, let's be honest.
Mr. Lucas, based on this additional testimony, any additional cross?
No.
Dr. Clenham, did I see you may have a question or two, maybe, or Mr. Crowley?
So I guess you stated that it's unconventional, but I was actually...
Just like the well pad.
Exactly. Yeah, you kind of took my thunder.
Yeah, sorry.
So, Mr. Crowley, very impressive data analyst, data analyst here. I do this as well for work, obviously, not with gas wells. You did mention in your testimony, if you can pull up where you showed, I think it was a 500% over the top 20, when it's sorted only by unconventional gas well? Yeah. It was quite robust, I don't want to speak without looking at it.
Do you want to take mine temporarily?
I can take that, you have to have this.
Okay. Oops, fell off the screen here. Let me try again. Oh, I see, if you go all the way to the end, you lose it. Sorry. So you're referring, Mr. Clenham, to Crowley Exhibit 4, page 11?
Yeah, and I think that you've done a really good job here just to note that you did select it to only be around unconventional wells as pertains and has been well stated here. But as a concerned resident that lives near the pipeline, you noted that you do have analyses for the same type of DEP violations and whatnot. Do you have, or could you share, the percentage increases for those that are included with the pipelines?
I'm an objective advocate. The witness has already testified that he didn't include that pipeline information because it's not part of the current hearing, so I think on relevance grounds, and he is just moving us along, we asked him that, that he'd object to that question or that question.
Just saying, I think, Mr. Crowley, I acknowledge the fact that that is relevant. Thank you, Dr. Clenham. Any other questions for Mr. Crowley? All right, now?
Okay, I am done. Are you sure? But I have a question for you. It's a procedural-type question. So I believe at the end, Olympus has the opportunity and the representatives to provide some closing arguments and rebuttal of some kind. Is that correct?
So they can provide witnesses or evidence or testimony?
Right.
After the close of the party objectors case, to rebut something that may have been raised that they didn't address in their case in chief, they have the option to either do so or not do so. Any witnesses that are presented at that time would be then subject to cross-examination by party objectors, like the rest of the witnesses have been.
Okay.
Does not go back again for rebuttal in the event of a case you were pondering.
Okay. And then, so, you know, I'm just trying to figure out if I should also be submitting my work into the record as not, or not. I don't know if anyone even has the ability to look at it.
When you say work?
The Excel spreadsheets where all of my analysis comes from, which... The Excel spreadsheets where all of my analysis comes from, which, the way pivot tables work, you can see the dataset that they're referenced to, and exactly what data they're pointing to, and a person would be able to see that all of the data came from exactly where I said it was, they would be able to see that my methods were accurate. And I invite anyone from Olympus to try to show them that these numbers aren't accurate. I'm as confident as a person can be that they are, and that they accurately represent objective evidence from what the DEP is providing.
So, I'm never gonna tell anyone what to submit and what not to submit, but, you know, if the documents that you presented reflect your findings, that you may find that sufficient. I'm not telling you that you should or you shouldn't, but, you know, keep in mind, the board, you know, is going to be reviewing quite a bit of information, you know, as you, as has been presented over these, you know, past seven, almost seven full hearings. So, if you feel like it's appropriate to submit the backup documentation, I won't tell you no.
Okay. The only reason I ask is I have it on a few different spreadsheets, and I don't have those here to be able to say what exhibit number they would or wouldn't be, that's why I'm asking, so I'm not sure how to handle that.
If they are simply what, you say they are, they can all be submitted as one, you know, exhibit 11? If you'd like to submit that, just make sure you get a copy of Mr. Lucas, and, you know, we're gonna copy the township, so we can have that posted, if in fact you're gonna submit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
That is my question, and then I'm done. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Crowley, appreciate it.
Exhibit, should they go to?
Yes, keep sending Mr. Payne, we're making it work, even though he's not technically, even though he's technically off this week. Yeah, I know, right? He emailed me pretty late last night responding to something, so I know he's paying attention still, and we'll make sure that we continue that process, but as far as the physical documents, Kate's here to make sure that, you know, we get all those in a proper order and properly marked. All right, so we have about a half an hour left from our scheduled four hours, plenty of time to knock out several more party objectors. So, who do we have up next? And I know, there's some people who are being shy, because I know that there's people who have sat through this entire hearing, waiting for their opportunity to speak. And again, if you're a party objector, this is your opportunity. If you fail to take this opportunity, you will not have an opportunity during public comment. We are only doing that not to be mean or force people to speak earlier than they want to, but to maintain some semblance of, you know, order for the hearing. So who is coming up next to follow Mr. Crowley? And did you bring your spreadsheets?
I did not bring my spreadsheets.
All right, well, let you speak anyway.
I'm just going to make some comments. I submitted my letter on the first meeting, my name's Kathy Burke, and I live 436 Paradise Drive, Smithsonian. And I submitted my letter and my background, my residency in the township in two years. I am, my husband and I have lived in West Deer for 34 years on Paradise Drive, and we have, as I said in my letter, we have enjoyed our time in West Deer, we have raised our two daughters in the school, I have three grandchildren still in West Deer, and one now, thankfully, not in West Deer. I am so concerned by what I've heard, and quite frankly, as one of the other members spoke about, I think Ms. Austin stated, I only found out quite by accident that this was even gonna happen, these hearings. And I worked in computer man, computers, so I understand what Mr. Crowley went through. I worked in computers for over 40 years, I worked in, we're in the banking industry, where we have to be down to every detail, every step, everything, you look at everything. I was in project management for a bank for eight years, and, you know, the amount of information that the public, general public, is being going through to try and present the issue of safety with these wells, it's unimaginable. And having retired two years ago to take care of my granddaughter that's not even two yet, I don't look, you know, working in that industry, I don't look at computers that much, I don't, I'm not on social media, I don't really care to be involved with a lot of things like that, but this is really important to people's lives. You know, and I, as these meetings have come on, I said to my husband, you know, we've lived here 34 years, I enjoy a view of Mill Road, I look directly at that hill, it's directly east of me. I see it, I see cars coming down Middle Road Extension in the winter, I can see them in the summertime, but usually just headlights at night, I hear traffic from 9:10, but only during the day, not at night, but with this well pad, when it goes in, and how relevant this is going to be, when I voted the other day at West Deer number three, as I was trying to pull out on 9:10, I saw the hugest dump convoy of trucks, there was only five of them, four together, one separate, but they were flying down 9:10. And when I had to stop at that red light on that entire road, I was terrified of being rear-ended by one of those. I've been in an accident before, or being rear-ended, so, you know, this is real, this is not something to be taken lightly, and I understand that it's your responsibility to do the, if you don't know how they do the drilling, I understand that, but I think that the residents of West Deer should be so proud of themselves for all the work that they have brought in, to try and help you understand that, and I know this is not an easy decision for you at all. This is, this is really important to our community, it is really highly important. You know, we, West Deer has always made advancements, I mean, since I've been here, there's been so many advancements in schools, in businesses, in, you know, our EMS and our fire, the township residents have supported that, but this is something that we can't support, it is just not safe, let alone the ordinances, they have not, they have not fulfilled them, they are within that 650-foot limit. And I don't know if this is submissible or not, but I'm gonna say it anyhow, the state, our senators, our, I don't know if I wrote, yeah, Senate Bill 650, our senators are looking at changing the law from 500 feet to 2,500 feet. What does that say? If our senate has a bill, and this is from June 7th, 2021, that is out there, if they're looking at changing it from 500 feet to 2,500 feet, what does that say? These residents are all within, well within that limit, and I really want you to think about what you're doing. If they are considering changing that, what impact does that have? We would have no way to go back. And I told my husband, you know, we're gonna have to move, I'm not gonna submit my grandchildren to visit my home and have to be surrounded by this horrendous act of willfulness. They willfully do not provide the information. They, they have a pig launcher, but it won't tell you where it's going, it's not acceptable. Well, that's just too late, that's gonna be in my neighborhood, that's gonna be at the end of, right, that's where it's gonna be, and what recourse do we have? It's really terrible. So I, you know, I'll submit this, you can read it, my other things are on here, but I really hope you take this safety, safety issue is just, I just commend the residents, and I know it's their business, and, you know, that's their business, and, but this is your business, protect us and to help us, and it's not an easy one. Thank, I thank the Lord that, you know, he's gonna give you the wisdom and discernment to do it. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Burke. Did you, did you say you wanted to submit some sort of documentation, or no?
Well, I don't know if I can submit this bill, this would be the only thing I have, I only have one copy.
You know, I'm not here to make objections, but that's, that's a legal argument, in fact, it's a legal argument for proposed legislation, and it hasn't gone anywhere, so I, I don't think it's really relevant, but, okay, it's not evidence, so I might ask.
My other statement, I already submitted that.
Okay.
First day, all these 11.
Okay, so you'll withdraw, I would tend to agree that Mr. Lucas said proposed legislation isn't necessarily sort of factual evidence for the hearing, but certainly it's something that-
It's consideration about what they are considering, I mean, I think it is.
It is true that that's what the legislatures can consider.
So, I mean, I will submit this, I'll give you my copy of it.
We, that's fine, we'll, if there was an objection, we'll overrule the objection, but the board will consider it for what it is, and you can feel free to submit, we'll mark it as Burke one or two, whatever.
Probably two.
Okay.
I mean, do you want me to email it, or do you want me to just give it to you now?
You know what, why don't you just give it to us, it's a publicly accessible document, available to all.
And it also makes reference to the Grand Sheriff Report, I believe. I've been carrying it around for a while. I didn't know I was able to-
It's technically not evidence, but, you know, it's fine, we have. Okay, yes ma'am.
Hi, I'm Catherine Westman, I live at 104 Steeplechase Drive, Smithsonian 15044, Westman, W E S T M A N. And I have, beside my copy, I have two copies.
Could you give one to Mr. Lucas and Ms. Condo over there, and then one to us? Thank you.
See, it's short.
And this looks like an email from you to you?
Yes, because that's what I turned it around on, my computer was out.
And this is, this is a copy of the statement you're gonna read?
Yes. I'm Catherine Westman, and I'm an RN, and I'm a member of the Alliance of Nurses for Environmental Health, and as I've said, I live in Steeplechase. I'm surprised to be here tonight, because I thought the job of government was to protect the people, and I'm asking the Board of Supervisors, please protect the people of West Deer Township. As a registered nurse, I am most concerned about the potential negative effects on our community's health by the unconventional oil and gas activity. Please recognize that these impacts are greatest on the developing babies in utero infants and children, because we said this is affecting neighborhoods.
Ms. Westman, hold on one second.
Just looking at the script, it's getting into all the environmental issues and the like that the board's already ruled are beyond this scope.
Not necessarily, this is about babies, and they're talking about this being in neighborhoods.
So, you know, again, I want to give you some leeway, because I know this is the first time you've spoken, but, you know, we have ruled, and I want to be consistent, that if you're just talking about the general dangers of hydraulic fracturing, then it's not something that we can, here, it's gotta be really specific to, yeah, so what you're giving me is pretty clearly that thing I just said.
I only want to highlight the green section. Did you know that children's lungs continue to develop after birth?
Here's the same objection. And I have to sustain the objection again, just to be consistent, ma'am. You know, to the extent that there's something specific to this site, this particular project, that you want to, that you believe is impactful, that's not generally the use that's regulated by the state and permitted by the state, we can hear that testimony. But when it comes to just general objections to fracking and its, and its health impacts, that's something that we've consistently ruled for the past seven nights, that we're not gonna hear.
I understand. I thought the fact that this is involving neighborhoods, you are putting this right next to people, that you need to know that children, I don't think there'll be any controversy that their lungs don't develop overnight, they keep one developing, so I won't, I won't put that in there. Can I say that I personally took a frac tour of Washington County?
Sure.
Okay, I spoke to people living there, and I've been involved with the Environmental Health Network, which monitors health of people living in Washington County, and so I met many of those people, and some of the general complaints I thought were things that you should know, because it's been, it's, am I out of line saying that premature, premature birth-
Look at the objection.
-and low birth weights of infants, that's kind of, it's standard now.
Sorry, ma'am, the, again, these health issues are not relevant, and the extent we're relaying complaints by others are also the same.
So, you know, again, I have to sustain the objection, but I do want to, do you want to point out that, you know, if the, I don't think Mr. Lucas means that the health impacts are not relevant to the community.
They're just not relevant in this proceeding.
Right.
Again, I stress that Olympus takes environmental issues very seriously, but they're just not within the domain of this board.
Yeah, and it's been sort of a common theme, and as we've stated, you have general objections to hydraulic fracturing, really need to go to elected officials above the level of this board.
Right, and that was part of the theory, the, we can't discuss the surgeon general's recommendations, that not only do we improve 2,500 to 2,500, also hospitals and schools should be 5,000.
Right, I mean, you know, the fact that there's pending legislation that would make this sort of use more restrictive, is not something this board can consider as one of its criteria when it's evaluating the application. So again, not saying it's not important, and maybe that is the right thing to do, but as of right now, this board is operating under the law, as it's been passed by the state legislature, and not what the legislature might do with, for instance, with the Senate bill that Ms. Burke raised, or to the regulations.
In response to the surgeon general's recommendation, yes.
Right, or attorney.
Attorney general.
Right. One of those generals. So, yeah, I mean, I, again, if you have personal observations, personal feelings about this particular site, this particular application, we can hear those. But general objections to health impacts and the use in general, again, is-
But, if we knew better, we should do better.
I think we can all take that to heart.
So I'm asking, because I consider it a moral and an economic decision to have this well pad in our neighborhood, I'm asking you to please put the health of our residents and their children first, as you evaluate these permits and promises. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, any cross?
No.
Anyone else?
I have a comment.
We don't really have comments at this point.
I want to address, I want to address the supervisors and the citizens.
Are you a party, are you, first of all, if you're gonna speak, we need you in a microphone. Secondly, are you, are you a, are you a party objector to the case?
Yes.
Okay, great, come on up.
I just want to make a few statements.
That's perfect, that's what, that's, this is the time for that.
I come in peace.
Again, state your, state your name, spell your last name.
My name is John Baskovic, B A S K I V I C H. I live at 311 Ridgeview Court, Ellison Park, PA, 1501. All I want to say, dude, is, I just want to give an overview to everybody, how I feel, and maybe that's how they feel, and that you, people know they're on the supervisors and the people of Olympus here, what's, what my feelings are.
Try to stay a little closer to the mic, microphone, if you can.
Okay. I moved here in 2017 to West Deer Township, from a canvas township, where I lived for 49 years. I always liked the Shaw Foreign Properties, where I actually live right now, and was delighted to know that lots were available there. and was delighted to know that lots were available there to build a retirement home. After 49 years, this was a big decision for myself and my wife. But we decided to build there and became a resident of West Deer Township in July 2017. My wife and I were very pleased to be moving to a new home in such a beautiful, peaceful setting in West Deer Township. After living in the township, I thought, what a wonderful combination of suburban and rural living, and that we made the right decision in deciding to live there. The township has many more desirable features than other townships in North Hills, including less congestion, good separation of commercial and residential areas, blend of suburban and rural living, good environmental qualities, low noise levels, scenic countryside, and pleasant surroundings to include wildlife and natural vegetation. At this point now, with what's happening with the proposed fracking facility, we as residents must deal with the following type things, which are common knowledge. When you're talking about fracking facilities or commercial facility which we're proposing here, continuous noise from fracking equipment and trucks close to the residential housing, dangerous heavy truck traffic in residential areas, commercial equipment to include big trucks over narrow roads and bridges, not designed for that type of use, safety considerations for residents with families, and especially small children, pollution of the air, water, and ground from fumes and chemicals used in a fracking process, congestion caused by dealing with commercial traffic, more traffic like Cedar Ridge Road, which is near me, caused by motorists using it to avoid the traffic on Route 910, and a general decrease in the quality of life as a result of sharing residential space with a noisy commercial facility. This is indeed a high price to pay to satisfy just a few. Furthermore, I would just like to state this. I've been here to most of the meetings, I only missed a few. And many questions were asked to the people from Olympus and what have you. And many of the answers were, I don't know, this, I didn't get involved with this. Things that are real important issues to us, like, what was radiation? What's that going to, nobody would want to talk about it. Well, I don't know. What we say don't know, find out. Nobody ever addressed those issues to the people here. It's an important issue. How about the water? How about the air? What are we looking at? Furthermore, where are we going here? I mean, we're getting into a situation, we don't know what's going to be left in the wake of these fracking facilities going down the road. What do we have? What's it going to do to our life as residents? And also the fact that, you know, if you're doing this, I'm not opposed to progress, and fracking probably does have its desirable attributes. But, gosh, we don't want it right on top of us, as many people have stated here. I mean, this is a thing that's, we did, I came out here for peace, tranquility, and to enjoy a nice retirement. Now, we have to face this type of thing. In conclusion, I'd strongly recommend that the West Deer Supervisors strongly recommend that they object to having this facility this close to residents of this community. If you're going to do something like this, it should be like the other municipalities, be it such as Olympus, and Shaler, and Hampton and all, the regulations whereby fracking facilities are forbidden within two miles of residential area. We don't need this stuff right on top of us, and that's exactly what we're doing. So I'm asking you, please consider this. When you do that, consider it for us, consider it for you, consider it for everyone in this community. It's very important that we keep this community the way it is. And if you want to do this, do this out in foreign land somewhere where it isn't going to negatively affect us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Baskevich. I assume you have a cross-examination.
No.
We are getting towards the end of our time here, but while we're all here, I'd love to squeeze at least one more party objector in. So if someone's willing to come up and speak, fantastic. Thank you very much.
My name is Krista Soeghart, and I, my last name's Gal, is Ms. Lucas? My name is Christine Soeghart. I live at 306 Ridgeview Court in Allison Park, 15101. I have no flashy PowerPoints or charts or anything. I just have the statements that I would like to read. My husband and I moved to West Deer Township five years ago into the Shaw Farms Plan. At that time, we were only the third family in that plan. It is now fully sold. And I have calculated that the residents of that plan contribute roughly $300,000 annually to this township in the way of taxes. That's a considerable amount for a new residence. I've attended all six of the previous public hearings and listened to the testimony of Mr. Fleckendorfer, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gouli, and Mr. Rosenthal, the expert witnesses presented by Olympus Energy, as well as the cross-examination by members of Crowd and other party objectors. Last week, I listened to the testimony of three witnesses called by Mr. Resinetti, Nora and Shuey, Ms. Grabar, and Mr. Pinkerton. I would like to share with you and the Planning Commission some of my observations about these proceedings. We were given a list of credentials for each of the expert witnesses presented by Olympus, including education, years of experience, previous employment, et cetera. While their credentials may seem impressive, it was more surprising to me that some were unable or unwilling to answer some questions posed to them during redirect. They were able to share reports that they may or may not have been prepared by others in their employ. They may have visited a well site, observed something like lighting during daylight hours, not at night. They may have prepared their reports with a set of facts and parameters set out by Olympus. And they may or may not have been able to provide details about contracts with local water municipalities in Allegheny County and Pendleton. No one has given us, has given a direct answer to anything of vital importance or addressed the real concerns of residents, namely, health, safety, and well-being of every man, woman, and child in this densely populated section of the township. We can't talk about those things, because they're not addressed by the township ordinance in question. When Crowd witnesses gave testimony, Mr. Lucas had many objections with regard to evidence they wished to present, such as emails or recorded phone conversations, calling it hearsay, because the person referenced was not here to be cross-examined by him. Should we then assume that some of the reports presented by their expert witnesses were also hearsay, because the person or persons who prepared these reports were not, in fact, the person giving testimony and were not present to be cross-examined? Another word that was brought up several times by Mr. Lucas and his co-counsel during last week's testimony was bias. As I understand the definition of bias, it's a two-way street. One can be biased for or against a person, place, or thing. If witnesses presented by Crowd are characterized as biased, should we then assume that the witnesses presented by Olympus may also be biased? After all, they were hired, paid, and may actually currently be employed by Olympus. Further, might we also question whether some of the members of the Township Planning Commission may also be biased because of their affiliations with Olympus? I don't have- I don't have any flashy exhibits, charts, graphs, or PowerPoint presentations to share with Mr. Lucas, Mr. Robb, the commissioners, or the audience. I just know that after more than 24 hours of listening and observation, I have more questions than answers, and I am not convinced that approving this application is in the best interest of the township or the constituents you are here to serve. I respectfully request that the township not approve this request for the well pad site.
Lucas, any questions?
No.
No objections.
All right, I'm feeling lucky. I think we can sneak one more in before we go. Does anyone have a relatively short statement that they want to make? Or even-
That was a good explanation.
All right, we do have a think? No problem. Make sure you stand in the microphone if you could identify yourself and spell your last name, please. No, yep, got it. You got it?
Yes.
Yes, please.
My name is Janet Gensler. My husband's name is Ron. We live at 219 High Tower Farms Drive, Gibsonia PA 15044.
Just spell your last name.
G-E-N-S-P-R. My tip, it's not on the website yet, but I know it's submitted. Okay, well, let me see if I can read it. It's small on my-
Take your time.
It's just a one page, but I would like to-
Can you put your phone slide away?
Yeah, that might be better, then I can see it. Okay, so I address my letter to Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed Olympus Energy dwell site on Middle Road Extension. My husband and I are residents and taxpayers of West Deer Township and own property at 219 High Tower Farms Drive, Gibsonia 15044. I am a registered party objector, and I have attended all the public hearings, and I give all the dates, regarding the application by Olympus Energy LLC to drill two deep well sites within West Deer Township. Our property mentioned above is in the one-mile evacuation buffer zone of the proposed Dionysus well site on Middle Road Extension. Thus, my main concern is regarding this site. According to the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, and I quote this, "An elected township supervisor is responsible for deciding issues of public safety, spending, road management, zoning, roads and streets, code enforcement, et cetera. My husband has multiple sclerosis and can only walk with a rollator or walker. He is unable to drive. According to testimony from Olympus representatives, if an evacuation is necessary, Olympus would contact 911 and emergency personnel would manage the evacuation. My question to the West Deer Board is, if I would not be home should an event such as this occur, how can I be assured that my husband would be evacuated? If my husband were left behind in bodily harm or death, what occurred to him? Who's responsible? Olympus? West Deer Township." Where would the liability fall? I mean, human life is more important than money. Testimony by Olympus indicates that they cannot guarantee that there would not be an evacuation emergency with this operation. In addition, I'm also concerned by listening to all the testimony that has been provided by Olympus and contractors hired by Olympus to perform studies, that there has been many unanswered questions. On many occasions, the party objectors have asked questions to these individuals, and the response has been, I don't know the answer to that question. And when asked, who would know the answer, the answer's the same. The application is too important to our community to have questions left unanswered by the applicant, especially when this proposal deals with the safety, health, and lives of West Deer Township residents, taxpayers. In conclusion, I'm requesting that the West Deer Board of Supervisors consider first and foremost the safety of its residents, as this application is too close to residential developments, such as our community and High Tower Farms.
Thank you, Ms. Gensler.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Lucas?
No.
Probably a good time for us to break. Can I, just so we have a sense of where we are in the hearing, can I get a show of hands of folks who are party objectors, who intend to put on a case? So where were all these people? And I was begging for people to come to the microphone.
People came up.
You guys are holding out on me. Okay, well, that eliminates the question as to whether or not we need to squeeze in that extra hearing that I thought we probably would anyway. So we are going to wrap up for tonight. I do want to announce the date and time of the next hearing. It will be November 10th, which is next Wednesday, 6:00 PM, same location. We will pick up with the party objectors. Let me say, we may need to go a little bit longer next Wednesday, because we do want to get through the party objectors. So I want to be real clear on this. All the party objectors are going to need to be ready to go on November 10th. So you may not get another opportunity, so please come prepared next week. Yes, ma'am?
I mean, don't you think four hours is already long enough?
I sure do.
So, I mean, going a little longer, what does that mean?
It means we maybe have to come back one last night.
Not till midnight.
Not till midnight.
Because, you know, I watch a two-year-old. I can't take it.
You know what? I have a volunteer board of supervisors up here. We have a room full of people, and I'm sure that every single one of us probably would rather be doing something else. But, you know, certainly we appreciate everybody's time and patience, and we will continue to work to get through it. But again, please be prepared next Wednesday for the test for party objector cases. Yes, ma'am. Hold on one second, please. Yes, ma'am. Again, you have to state your names, because we have a court reporter.
My name is Mary K. Howell Voda. I live at 702 Crystal Spring Court in Gibsonia 15044. Are we going to have public comment next week? Or when will public comment for people not party objectors be held?
Well, since we're, it's not clear how long party objector cases are going to be, I can't tell you for sure when public comment's going to be. But public comment will be when party objector cases conclude.
Okay. I don't know where that leaves.
I don't either. Sorry, I wish I could give you more information.
No, because I was wondering, are we going to publicize that to the citizens of West Deer Township, to the residents, to the voters, to the people who live near this place?
Well, we will continue to get information out as we have it, but if it turns out that we finish one of these hearings at, you know, after an hour, you know, we're not going to, you know, wrap up and then wait for public comment the next time. We may carry over to a future hearing, but we're going to do the best we can to continue to hear from everyone. I hope everyone, you know, recognizes this board is, you know, really trying to hear from all of its residents as an objector to taxpayers. So they'll continue to do that. That's what I've been directed to make sure happens, so we'll be sure that happens.
So it may very well be the second half of next week?
Well, I saw a lot of hands raised at the end here, so it could be, though. I mean, there's a definite possibility we get into public comment. I would ideally like to start public comment. I doubt we will get through public comment, even in a best-case scenario, by next week. But theoretically, it could happen.
So we should be telling people that want to have public comment, they should show up next week?
There's a possibility that they would have an opportunity for public comment as early as next month.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.